Police had a come to the board of trustees. I was courts.
Man, that's on the east.
You're kidding me.
Hey, thank you everybody for being here. I would like to call this special meeting of the South Orange Board of Trustees to order today, June 9th at 7:35 PM. Could we have the roll please?
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levison.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Yeah.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Yep.
Susan Caljean, present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall on the Village website and has been filed with the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Thank you. We have one resolution to go into executive session.
Resolution authorizing an executive session at the June 9th, 2014 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
We have three matters to discuss on executive session this evening. The first is South Orange Ave, Church Street, which is a contract negotiation, JAC, which is litigation, and redevelopment update, which is an attorney-client privilege. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Cullen, seconded by Trustee Levin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Back here at eight.
Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order at 8:20. Sorry for the delay. Could we have the roll please?
Village President Torpey.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levison.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Okay, first tonight, I'm very excited to be able to welcome up the Community Relations Committee to present this month's Villagers of the Month. We have someone from the CRC here. Jimmy?
You coming up?
Oh, I can't see behind the podium.
Hi, I'm James Johnson. I'm from the Community Relations Committee.
Speaking to Mike Jim.
I'm sorry. I'm James Johnson from the Community Relations Committee, and tonight we're honoring Clean Sweep. They're our Villager of the Month.
Still just a little bit closer.
You have to speak correctly.
Thank you. Our Villager of the Month is Clean Sweep. It's a volunteer group that has been cleaning up our litter since 2010. Clean Sweep is the brainchild of Matt Mathis and his son Derek. Their resolve is not only to remove the litter, but raise awareness to not litter. I need my glasses, I'm sorry. To accomplish this task, they called upon family and friends to volunteer. Their sister Kelly is involved, and their closest friend Brian Baumann, and others. Before the South Orange Village Alliance, Clean Sweep patrolled the Central Business District, Irvington Avenue, Valley Street, and tidied that up for all of us. Clean Sweep no longer is involved in the litter removal downtown, but has become involved in other projects to assist the village. Clean Sweep participates in the annual river cleanup, has volunteered to clean up Grove Park. Last fall, they helped one of that beautify the police station. And recently, they were at Irvington Avenue when the plantings were done about two, three weeks ago. Clean Sweep is always available when needed. And South Orange was very fortunate to have Clean Sweep, not only because of their dedication to our village, but because they have volunteered with no anticipation of personal recognition, and that's what the community relation does. All people who volunteer, such as yourselves, you do it for the betterment of your town, but you deserve it, thank you. So, their efforts are for the general welfare of the residents and the visitors, because how our town looks is the impression people have, and that's very important for our businesses, to our village. I now present Clean Sweep, Matt Mathis, his son Derek, their friend Brian, and their sister Kelly.
Say a few words?
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'd like to just recognize a few people. First of all, I'd like to thank all the volunteers over the years who have done Clean Sweep. It was an idea, like Jim said, that Derek and I came up with, and I want to recognize my buddy Brian Baumann, who's been there from day one, my daughter, a lot of her friends. My daughter, a lot of her friends, my son Derek, his friends, my sister Kelly. And I'd like to just talk about how we started, and we couldn't have done it without the help. When I brought the idea to a local business owner, she was very enthusiastic and helped us. And I would just like to thank Leslie Pagani, the owner of Bunny's Restaurant, who helped us out in the beginning. She gave us free pizza after we did every Clean Sweep. She helped us get affiliated with the South Orange Chamber of Commerce, who ended up sponsoring us, getting us our equipment that we needed to, you know, do what we do. Leslie's a giver, and we thank her very much. Also, the South Orange Fire Department has, they donated money to us last year to help us get boots, which helped us do River Day, and some gloves and sweepers, so thank you to the fire department. We'd like to like to recognize and just say what a great job I think Tommy Machete and the DPW does in this town. They make the town look beautiful, doing the beds and the flowers, and just keeping the town clean, so they do a great job. Thank you, DPW. And then just lastly, the way Clean Sweep came about, we were inspired, Derek and I, walking up the avenue one day years ago, and there was a former business owner, property owner, who goes out every single day, puts her gloves on, and cleans her property. And that's where we came up with the idea, and I would like to just thank Carol Lowey for doing what she continues to do. She sold her business, and she still goes out every day, and I'd just like to say if business owners, if every business owner did what she does, we would have the cleanest town in America. And she was just a very big inspiration, and we'd like to thank her. So thank you, everyone. Have a great summer.
Thank you guys for all the work that you do, and thank you again, of course, to the CRC for identifying other grateful people that have contributed so much to the community. Do have a couple of announcements to go through tonight. The first is that we had our first farmer's market this past Wednesday. The farmer's market will be open every Wednesday through October from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. You can find all sorts of interesting, and a lot of New Jersey and local produce and prepared foods there. And so it's right in the, it's moved a little bit over to one side, but it's in the parking lot, kind of on First Street, right by the traffic circle there. The Downtown After Sundown Concert Series is back for another season. The concerts, if you'll recall, every Friday and Saturday evenings all summer long. So you can find one of the concerts down on Sloan Street in front of the Village Diner next to South Orange Ave, and the other at Spiota Park. So the concerts are every Friday and Saturday night. They start at 7:30. I mean, they usually go till about 10:00 p.m. And if you want any more information about that, you can contact the Village Center Alliance at info@southorangevillagecenter.org. And First Night, there's an effort underway to reestablish First Night for New Year's this year after a two-year hiatus. If anybody's unfamiliar with it, it was designed to be an inexpensive and family-friendly New Year's Eve celebration for South Orange and Maplewood. It had a wide variety of entertainment for all ages and for the family, and everything was coordinated, organized, and totally run by volunteers. And so we're currently looking for people of all different skills and interests, but especially anybody with event management, event planning, marketing promotion, or anything like that, to get involved. And if you'd like to do that, or want to learn a little bit more about the effort, you can visit somafirstnightweebly.com. On the Two Town Triathlon for Kids, we're hosting the Two Town Triathlon for Kids on Saturday, June 14th at 8:00 a.m. This is sponsored by the South Orange and Maplewood Departments of Recreation, the South Mountain YMCA, and Atlantic Health. Children ages seven to 14 will swim laps at the South Orange pool, then they'll bike through Meadowland Park in the West Montrose neighborhood, and run around the duck pond, ending the race at the footbridge next to the pool. If you're interested in more information about that, you can contact our rec department. Another reminder about Container Days, they are the following Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 1:45 p.m., or 1:30 p.m. is the latest that you can arrive. It's June 21st, July 22nd, August 23rd, and September 27th. It's down at the Public Works Garage on Walton Ave. Just make sure you bring down an ID that proves that you do live in town, and there are no commercial vehicles permitted down for that. If you do need more information about that, you can contact DPW at (973) 378-7741. Celebrating its 24th season, our highly anticipated Free Concert in the Park Series are returning to Flood's Hill. For five consecutive Wednesdays starting July 2nd, we have a wide range of bands and entertainment. For the whole family, we've got reggae, jazz, 80s, 90s, and more modern contemporary music, too. In addition, a bunch of food and beverage vendors, including St. James Gate, Pizza Vita, and Meals Concessions will be on hand for a variety of different food options during the concerts. People are encouraged to bring a chair or blanket down, and bring your family and friends. The shows begin at 7:00 p.m. They're free, no tickets required, just head down to Flood's Hill. And if it is raining, the rain location is here at SOPAC. The program this year is being co-presented by the village, the Baird, and the South Orange Performing Arts Center. And these concerts in the Park Series are made possible in part by funding from BCB Community Bank and Maple Crest Ford Lincoln. So if you want a little bit more information, including to see some of the amazing acts that will be there this year, please visit sopacnow.org, and you can find all that information and more. Next up, we have a presentation from Mark Hartwick, the Director of the South Orange Parking Authority.
Evening.
Evening.
Can you hear me back there?
Good, good. Did I jump the schedule on the agenda?
Nope.
I thought I was later. Okay.
Go ahead.
I gave you all a handout. Felt like I was giving you a book report. It's a work in progress of a summary of the jitney history, the associated grant funding for the start of the services, how the service initiated 12 years ago, how its demand has grown, and how we've serviced that demand over the last decade. From one route to three routes currently, and from two buses to multiple buses currently. Within that packet, you'll find a brief history, also a, an exhibit that is a good sample of the invoicing that took place as a result of the inter-local service agreement that was originally established between the authority and the village to operate the service on the village's behalf. You also have the current route schedules. You have a current breakdown of our vehicles, ones that are currently in service and out of service. We have several that are on the verge of being retired. And then you have a summary of the current staffing to provide the service. All of this was presented as a precursor to hopefully a workshop that will take place in the very near future with members of this board and members of my board, to sit down and discuss where we can go from here insofar as being able to sustain this service in the future through additional grant funding, hopefully, and a series of other avenues that hopefully we can discuss offline as a group. That being said, I also have a, just a quick outline, I'll circulate to everybody this week of the workshop outline to discuss the jitney bus specifically, and some parking endeavors that we hope to have an opportunity to share with both boards. Bear in mind that this is not a real finished product, what you have. It's a good guideline. If there's any typos, I take responsibility for that. If you have any questions for me at the moment? If not, Trustee Cullum and Trustee Rosner, as our Parking Authority liaison, are going to be talking to the board and scheduling something based around everybody's availability for this workshop.
We did, I always have questions, don't I? As you saw from the budget memo that we received from Mr. Lewis, there was a request from the Parking Authority regarding some of the salaries of the driver, drivers for this current fund budget. I'm not very sure what we can accommodate given this timeline, because we've already introduced something on first reading, and we are expecting to adopt the budget at our June 23rd meeting. So if there's any changes that need to be incorporated or discussed, it would need to be done now. And so I opened that up to the board. Obviously, I support the workshop in us addressing this in the long term of what we'd like to do with the jitney services, but I guess the immediate need is what we would like to do for the upcoming year.
Correct. So, again, the conversation has to take place regarding your current standing with your budget, whether the village administrator is set to finalize that, or whether there's any available funding in there that you can see your way put forth to, even if you look at the last two quarters of this current year, using the invoicing mechanism that preexisted for the prior grants as a way for us to back invoice the village for some of these salaries. What we've looked at is, is that last year's gross salary for drivers was right around $186,000. The jitney generates about $68,000 gross last year, so we're looking at roughly $115,000. The authority isn't in a position to come to you and demand any of that. What we were hoping to do is get things moving so that the village is actively seeking grants that would be forthcoming in the next couple of years, hopefully, if not sooner, that we're actively continually pursue New Jersey Transit for additional vehicles as needed. The authority will continue to pay the salaries, obviously, but we could use some relief in the last two quarters of this year, based on our numbers from last year. We're sustaining that service on our side strictly by our revenues that are generated from meters and permit sales. It's not sustainable from the jitney itself, so those are the realities. Whatever this board can do or can't do will survive this year. If that doesn't happen, it would be beneficial if it did. That being said, at least you know where we're at, and hopefully you can take some positive steps in your next budget cycle.
I thought as part of our discussion that we had at the Parking Authority meeting, that we discussed as, from a policy perspective with the Parking Authority, that there was a question about raising parking fees, and some of that parking fee then can be attributed to the jitney as an offset. The other item that is left out of this is that typically the Parking Authority transfer a revenue of $50,000 a year to the village. Last year, I don't think you did it, and this year as well, there's a reduction of $50,000 to the village's anticipated income or revenue.
Okay. The answer to the first question, as far as permit fees and rates and increases, that's going to be part and parcel of the workshop discussion. There's a lot of ideas floating around from both boards, so ultimately, we'd like to have that discussion on that level. Eventually, we will take it to a public forum, at least one, maybe two, between now and the conclusion of the Third Street development and the opening of that new garage. And we'll get the public's input also on that. As far as the $50,000 annual gift, the authority had to look at the fact that when the funding stopped from the village, that ultimately reimbursed us for the driver's salaries, and we took over that. That was in excess of $100,000 for us. That was a major hit to our budget. So there was a decision made that if we didn't have $50,000 surplus, and it was, the majority of our funding was going to cover all of our expenses, including those salaries, it didn't seem prudent to try and come up with an additional $50,000 just to say here, when we were already showing out well over $150,000 on salaries that used to get reimbursed to us. We're not opposed to doing that if we're in a surplus mode where that money's available and there. Last year, it was not.
But this isn't really necessarily a cyclical business. You're not waiting for an upturn that would change things, right? Or is that the case?
It's not a cyclical business. We're a front-loaded business. We primarily receive, the majority of our funding in the front of the year on permit sales. It's incrementally fed on meter and quarterly and semi-annual permit sales. On the other side of the books, we have our transit operation, and we usually derive a surplus from that, but that also goes into cover our general expenses. Any other questions?
Howard, I mean, Trustee Levinson, you have this for later discussion also. You added this. Did you basically get what you needed? Because then we won't have to do it under discussion items.
Correct.
Okay, so just for, to repeat, consensus of the board right now is that this item for driver's salaries, et cetera, is not included in the introduced budget. So I think the direction for the time being is we're not going to make modifications to the budget. It does not include additional money to SOPA, and then we're going to move forward with having a workshop and addressing some of these longer-term items. Is that
Addressing the policies.
While addressing the policies, et cetera.
Mr. Hartwick, you understand that as far as the budget is concerned for this upcoming year?
We're fine, and I understand that you're locked in, so, and we're not going to receive that funding. That's fine. We'll be fine with that. Just don't expect another $50,000 at the end of the year. We won't be able to do that this year either. Okay?
Yeah, that's good, because we really can't make any decisions about salary increases without a thorough examination of what you're proposing, which will happen in the workshop.
Correct.
So will you guys have the opportunity to have that discussion before the next board meeting?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
In two weeks' time? I don't know. I mean, we'll endeavor to get it scheduled, but it's going to be dependent on everybody's flexibility.
Okay, so we'll just make sure to update in whichever meeting is subsequent to the conversation.
Okay, and just as an add-on, in your next budget discussion cycle, especially capital improvements, there'll be a consideration for a larger bus. We have a need for at least one 40-passenger bus. Our new stead runs are doubling up in the AM and PM for the overloads, and that will be also part of the workshop discussion on the bus side. Okay?
Just a question about that quickly. Do you think that that's related to some of the temporary parking? I mean, it seemed like we had kind of discussed this before, is that it seems like there's actually a lot less people parking in the downtown. I don't know how many are walking or sticking to jitney, but has that uptick been associated with that, or is it
No, it was pre-existing.
Outside of that?
It was pre-existing in shutting down the rescue squad park.
Okay.
And just to confirm, Mr. Hartwick, the bus, you had sent me the information. I did pass it along to the board, but to get the bus that you're suggesting, it's roughly $120,000?
Correct. That spec is predicated on what Maplewood is currently bidding out. And their last two purchases of 40-passenger buses spread out over the last three years roughly came in around 108 and 115. So they're anticipating 120 for their current bid, which they'll process and have online within 24 months. They're on a two-year cycle.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We do have one other sort of discussion item slash presentation that we're going to front-load so our guest can speak. So Mark Packer, the Executive Director of SOPAC, is here.
I'd just like to say at the outset that my poor parking habits are supporting Mr. Harwick's organization. Good evening, President Torby, distinguished trustees. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and answer your questions about the South Orange Performing Arts Center's financial forecast for the year ending June 30th. That forecast was circulated to you via email this past Thursday, June 5th, and you also have a memo that was circulated to you by Mr. Lightner on May 10th with regard to our subsidy request. A year ago, the Board of Governors took a sizable financial risk by making two seismic decisions for the South Orange Performing Arts Center. The first, to hire an artistic programming consultant and an executive director to chart a new course for the future of the organization. These roles previously had been unsuccessfully concentrated in one position. And the second, to dramatically increase programming at SOPAC in terms of the number of presentations, quality and caliber of shows, and programmatic diversity. And I'm here tonight to share with you the results of those decisions. SOPAC has had a remarkable year for such a young organization. 2014 was marked by stunning growth, yet that growth was managed prudently and responsibly. In 2013, the center generated approximately $2 million in revenue and in 2014, that number jumped by over $425,000 or a 21.5% increase. This growth in revenue is largely attributable to the expansion of SOPAC-presented events, which more than doubled the number and also yielded much larger audiences. The impact of that growth is not just about ticket sales. It's about the number of people who dined in South Orange and availed themselves of the village's myriad retail establishments. As I previously noted in April to all of you, our estimate is that the economic impact of our audience's direct expenditures in South Orange was approximately $1.2 million for 2013-14. Those audiences came from 15 counties in New Jersey and from New York and Pennsylvania. Forty-three percent of our audiences, or 17,000 people, came from beyond the borders of Essex County, making SOPAC and by extension, the village, a true cultural destination. In the section I provided you on contributed income, there are also some notable signs of early success which will form the basis for a new and larger stream of revenue for the organization. Over $100,000 of new private and public institutional grants were received this year. You'll note that individual giving decreased. However, this reflects the reduction in support by one individual who is still giving to SOPAC at a very high level. What is most important here is that SOPAC has added a critically important new revenue stream, one that almost all nonprofits rely upon heavily for institutional stability. Until the village transferred the debt on the mortgage last June, raising money from these sources was impossible. And as we predicted last year, by unfettering the organization from this debt, you have allowed us to start on the path to self-sustainability. Remarkably, although there are many variances from budget, the center is expected to have a small surplus at year-end. A $50,000 surplus had been budgeted and we expect to land somewhere in the neighborhood of $43,000. This is a swing of nearly $52,000 from the previous year and on a budget of nearly $2.4 million, to be that close to budget is pretty remarkable. So how are we to view SOPAC's progress? I think this organization needs to be regarded as a startup enterprise. If we look at the end of 2013, as a new beginning for this organization, we see a dynamic, burgeoning organization that's having an enormous impact on the quality of life for its citizens and has become an economic driver for the downtown of South Orange. The feedback from the community about the changes at SOPAC have been overwhelmingly positive. People in South Orange are embracing the center as their center. No need to leave South Orange to experience world-class entertainment and cultural enrichment. There is a pride in our community that such a resource exists and that there is enough diversity in our programming to satisfy the myriad tastes of our highly educated and cultured residents. But as a startup, SOPAC is still a vulnerable institution. It has no endowment and no cash reserves. It has an extremely dedicated staff that is underpaid and in need of additional support and there is no sinking fund, meaning there is no money set aside for capital improvements or repair. We recognize the immediate need to build cash reserves and to that end, the center has already raised about $50,000, which has been pledged from board members to establish that fund. And our three-year goal is to raise $300,000 as a cushion to buffer cyclical cash flow issues and to protect the organization from the vagaries of economic changes. At present, this great cultural icon in our midst is, in a very real sense, a house of cards. It will need nurturing for the foreseeable future and its stakeholders, including the village, must view its support as a strategic investment in well-managed growth, not only for the cultural vitality of South Orange, but for the future of the village itself. I would contend that the success of SOPAC and the village are inextricably linked. However, we are not asking for support from the village in perpetuity. On the contrary, SOPAC is dedicated to becoming more self-sufficient and, as we enter into the summer and fall, we will be engaging in a strategic planning process that will not only chart a course for the future of the center's identity, programming and mission, but we will be developing a business plan and pro forma that will gradually shift our revenue sources away from municipal support and towards earned and contributed revenue. We will, of course, furnish the village with that plan upon its completion and we will be seeking your input in the planning process as we shape the future of our organization. Thank you for your time and great support. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Packer, when it's, when do you expect for your plan to be completed?
We would hope sometime between October and December. And we're beginning that process tomorrow.
I have a few questions. Can we first go over what the request from SOPAC is for the budget?
We're actually looking for the same amount as last year.
Which is roughly $319,000?
309.5.
I'm sorry, what's that?
309.5.
And the continuous pass-through from bowtie?
That's correct.
Which is roughly, Mr. Lewis, $200,000?
Two, little under two.
Mr. Packer, I've got to say that I'm a little disappointed that we're at the exact same spot we were last year. I had anticipated, at least this year, seeing some level of decrease from the increase we had given you this time last year. So I'm not sure, we haven't discussed this as a board, we saw it in the memo that was provided from the administrator. I'm not comfortable supporting at the 309.5 level. I'm open to discussion, but I think that last time we heard from SOPAC, and I don't disagree with the tremendous success that you've had during the past season, especially under your leadership, Mr. Packer, but I think we need to address the realities of the actual direct financial contribution that the board has been making to SOPAC over the past many years. And I don't think we have collectively agreed what the short and long-term plan is for that direct subsidy. All in, we're over half a million dollars and that's a pretty significant investment, I believe, of taxpayer dollars. But without a plan in place or better understanding how we're, we're going to address this, at least in the three-to-five-year term, whether it's going to continue coming in at this amount, my expectation last year was that it was a one-time infusion of cash to, to help kind of your, your flow, go after grants, et cetera. And I think we kind of lived up to our side of the agreement. So if I don't come in at that amount, it's certainly not because I don't believe you had significant success this year, but I think the financial realities was, we all believed that this year you would be requesting less.
Are you, are you looking for a reaction to that?
You know, I, I actually would like a reaction. Was it an expectation? Because I read Mr. Lightner's memo to the Board of Trustees and it wasn't clear to me that there was an understanding that this year it would be going down and that it was a one-time infusion of cash. So I'm not sure where the misunderstanding came from or whether I was the only one on the board who, who got it wrong. So perhaps you can give a little overview of how that request came in at the same level as last year's.
Well, I, I guess I can, I need to, you know, sort of fall back on my 30 years of experience as a nonprofit arts executive and say that even though we're emerging from this economic downturn, the availability of contributed support for nonprofits in the state of New Jersey is still an uphill climb. And that we've seen the kind of new support generated in a one-year span is really quite remarkable. And I, without the benefit of being able to bring to the fore information about the financial status of nonprofit arts organizations throughout the state, many of which are operating in the red and significantly so, it's hard for me to empirically reinforce what I'm saying to you, but that if, if you look at SOPAC, you need to look at it respectfully with a long-term trajectory and arc. And we've taken such positive steps in this first year, both programmatically, which has this impact, direct impact in the community, not just by our selling tickets, but through the economic benefits that inure to every business in town. And the fact that we have raised this new institutional support that forms a foundation, a basis for growth. It's not a one-time, one-off circumstance. And so I understand that you have to deal with the immediacy of a budget for a one-year period. You're making a strategic investment in an organization that is going to yield dividends for decades and hopefully much longer to come, but it is at a vulnerable place in its life. It's taken this amazing positive step, but it has very little to fall back on. And so I am imploring you to consider that, to consider SOPAC's value in that longer-term arc.
I'd like to hear trustee Schnall weigh in because you are the liaison to, to the organization and in addition to that, I would evaluate your input and your, your thoughts because of your extensive background in the arts. So would you like to share with?
Sure. I, I don't have the, the background that Mark Packer has in terms of nonprofit arts, but certainly I'll, I'll share my opinion. One of the things that I see in SOPAC and I assume those of you who are trustees that also attend events here is I see it a bit of as, as a growth engine for our community. And as Mr. Packer has alluded to, ticket sales is one thing and the fact that the performances have more than doubled, I think is significant. And I think the arts education program, which is not something that Mr. Packer has talked about yet, but what I've seen in the last year, I see the growth and that's, I think, again, what Mr. Packer is alluding to, is this is a early-stage organization that is kind of re-getting itself together after a number of years of very challenging years. So when the, when this building was built and we started a new arts center back a number of years ago, it was not done under the best circumstances. The footings were very poor. In fact, the infrastructure really wasn't in place in terms of funding. So what I see is an organization that's getting a chance, an opportunity to really start again. And I think that's a fortunate opportunity, a kind of a rare one that organizations get a second chance. But because of what we collectively did in terms of taking over the debt, allowing them to get grant money, which has been successful, has begun, I see the progress, the trajectory, which I guess was the word that Mark used, that I think is very positive. And that's the, the part that makes me very optimistic in terms of the potential. So in summary, I see, again, I see this performance space and it's more than just, I think SOPAC has gone beyond just a space of physical venue, but actually is becoming a brand, recognized as Mr. Packer has shared, not only by South Orange and regionally, but it goes pretty far. It's one of the things that I think we talk about when we are promoting land values, if we talk about to our real estate agents and they identify reasons to move to South Orange. I believe that the fact that this is a community that has a fair amount of desire and interest in cultural arts, that that actually increases land values. So for all those reasons, and again, it's the direction, the trajectory tells me that I think this is something that we want to do as an investment. That being said, and trustee Cullum, I can understand and, and share, I understand the frustration of, of not hitting a financial target and in terms of independence. I don't believe this, this organization, I shouldn't speak for Mr. Packer, but most nonprofits of these, of this size of an institution rarely, you asked about my experience, I have not seen them been able to run at a, at a positive basis in the black, based on performances alone without subsidies and other gifts. So I do believe that is incumbent upon us. It's important for us to support the group. I would, again, and to trustee Cullum's mention, I would support showing a, a tangible drop from last year just to show that the trajectory, again, is positive, that we're moving in the right direction towards, progressing towards a little more independence or less of a subsidy. So I don't know if we want to throw out numbers. I mean, I think it should be something that is significant, but that doesn't knock down at the knees, SOPAC. I think, again, they're showing progress. So if, if we want to show something towards a lesser subsidy, if we drop 20, 25,000 off of what we did last year, I think that would be a reasonable showing of, of what we would expect and hope out of the strategic planning as, as input towards progress, but at the same time, really supporting this organization as it needs.
If I could chime in, Mr. Packer, I want to congratulate you on the excellent job you are doing. Am I on? There we go. I, I've been coming to shows and I've been talking to neighbors and friends and people outside of South Orange and definitely feeling a momentum shift as far as SOPAC goes and both, that's both awareness and people being excited about coming to the shows and people knowing that, you know, certain acts are going to be here. And I enjoy, you know, speaking to my family in other parts of New Jersey and saying, nah, 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 we have SOPAC. Come visit. But I guess my question would be, in looking at the, the numbers you've put for us in the forecast, which are all positive, effectively positive, positive, where's this money going? I mean, what do you think is missing that, where does this need to go to?
I beg your pardon?
Where, where does the 309 need to go to? If, if, you know, things are working as far as the projections, what am I missing?
It's that money is. It's that money is helping us with marketing expenses, it's paying administrative overhead, it's keeping the lights on...
Closer to the mic.
I'm sorry. It's keeping the lights on, it's paying our administrative overhead, it's helping with our marketing expenses. It's, it's, it's really money that helps with all of the support that's needed to mount the various programs that we do. Most of our performances, actual main stage performances, either break even, they make a few dollars, they lose a few dollars, but on balance, they about break even. And this is traditionally the model of most nonprofit presenting houses. SOPAC is not unlike Mayo PAC or Bergen PAC or NJ PAC. They rely on a balance between earned and contributed income in order to pay the bills, to keep the lights on, to keep doing their work, to do their most charitable work. You know, our aspirations, my aspirations, my vision in the coming year and then over the next five years is for SOPAC not to just be this place-based institution, but to be touching people in the community in myriad ways, to bring the arts into schools in South Orange and beyond, to be reaching people with limited access to the arts, people in convalescent centers, in nursing homes, you know, diversifying the way in which we engage people in the creative process. In doing these things, we are going to build the contributed side of support, because this is what institutional funders are interested in supporting, that in turn will help us pay the overhead. And that's what's going to lead to a diminution in the amount that we're relying on the village for a subsidy. That's the path that I envision going forward.
You know, one of the...
Tony Leitner, I'm the chairman of the board, and I felt it was incumbent that this request come from me and from the board initially. And I want to just add one more point that Mark has added about what I've learned for the seven years, I guess, I've been involved as a member of the board and for the last four or five years that I've been the chair. And that is the cyclicality of cash flow. One of the reasons why I made the point last year to the trustee liaison as we were negotiating our restart was that I felt we really needed the level of support we asked for last year for two years. And I made that, I thought I made that pretty clear. And the reason why was because we were adding $100,000 to our, to our bottom, to our expense line by adding the additional staff of Mr. Lurie and Mr. Packer to our, to our group. We're still running at a very lean rate, but that was a huge economic risk. I am delighted that it looks like the ratio between our earned income and our production costs have really gone a lot, a little closer to one than they were a year or so ago or have been historically there. But we're not going to start selling tickets till next season. And in the meantime, when you book shows, you've got to put upfront deposits and so forth. I see that as a member of the finance committee. So from a, from my point of view, as someone who has a fiduciary responsibility to see that the organization is well-funded, I am concerned not only about the absolute level of support, but also by the timing. And so this, this request is, which is, essentially, to me, not for an increase of what I anticipated. And Ms. Column, that's, any misunderstanding is mine, because certainly my, what I told the members of the trustees last year, and I thought it was very upfront, that I thought this is what we needed. And in a $2 million budget, to be this close to break even is pretty scary, to be honest with you, because as Mark said, we really are looking to build a surplus and not to be running this close. So in addition to working down the subsidy, we also have to work up and double the amount of support we're getting from these other sources. And there is a lag time between the time we initiate, to me, it's terrific that we've raised $100,000 in grant support, foundation and grant support, in frankly, such a short time. And there are a lot of grant requests in the hopper to support potentially revenue-producing outreach that will go to the bottom line and help reduce our, you know, hit the administrative costs, the overhead expenses. Because as Mark said, the shows we put on on this stage do not contribute a heck of a lot to the reduction of overhead unless we get people to sponsor them, which is one of the streams that we will be trying to increase over the coming year. So the process that we're doing, and really, we could only have done it because Mark and Steve are now part of our management team, is to take a look at also what Mark brings. Don't forget that Mark's experience is in educational outreach, which has had, in his prior job, a positive impact to their bottom line. So the reason you do that is because there's tremendous support for that kind of effort. We see ourselves as not just place-based. I heard this from him, by the way, I didn't make this up.
Doing fine.
And if we're going to do that outreach, the question is, when are we going to do it? It's going to take lead time. Will we be, we will definitely be doing some more next year than we were this year. All those seeds have been planted. Steve knows all about this, it's been discussed at our board meetings. It's very exciting. So I look at this as a, trying to stay, as we say in cribbage, peg even, not get ahead. So I would be the last person to be sanguine about the support you guys have given us. It's been absolutely, you know, terrific. We wouldn't be here if this wasn't the original vision of the village. But those of us who are passionate about the place, want to see it not only stay even, but to grow and thrive. So I hope you'll give us, you know, your best consideration, understanding that this is, you know, just a, is it worth it? Yes. Is it needed? Yes. Is the amount we're requesting outrageous? No. We're really saying, let's peg even from last year. So that's all I have to say about it, and Mark can answer any other questions you have about where we go from here. So thanks very much for listening to us.
Yeah. One of the, I'd asked Mark one question before, but one of the, one of the things when we built SOPAC was it was a destination for the downtown, which is, Mark has pointed out, that it has been very successful and it actually has exceeded all those projections. And of course, we've also hoped that the, the place would be more self-sustaining now. And we know that the fundraising or the contributions from public and private have been much less than was originally anticipated, significantly less. And, you know, you always ask, can you do better on the fundraising side? And, you know, I know the economic downturn obviously had a major impact. I'm not really sure if we've made this kind of investment over these years, that we really want to make a symbolic cut, just for the point of making the cut, or if, you know, if this is the wrong time to cut back on that investment, especially since there's been such, such real growth and a big change in the direction of the performances and the theater and how it's operated under Mr. Packer. There's also one expense that's been added to their bill due to the Village Hall renovation, which we don't really count in, but there is a real cost to SOPAC for providing staff. I think they provide two staff people for our meetings, planning board and board of adjustment. I don't know what the real cost of that is. No, I'd seen one projected, but I'm just going to say if we run four meetings a year at a thousand, four meetings a month at $1,000 per meeting, that's a significant cost over the year. And I don't think they've actually even brought that up again in that, in that cost. But I think it's a cost that we have to recognize that we've added onto their budget.
We estimate that at $86,415.
Okay. So, so that's, that's part of the reason, I think, was for the increase, which they haven't really brought up. And I think it's fair that we should bring that up. And I know we're going to be talking about Village Hall at some point, we're going to hopefully have a real discussion, although it probably won't be tonight. But that's one of the costs of renovating Village Hall. And it's one of those things that we, whether we rent space, whether we continue to rent or we renovate the building, that cost is here and has to be accommodated for, because we can't expect them to pick up that cost, which is a free tab, you know, to us. And whether the number is $86,000 is the real number or not, or whether it's $50,000 or $100,000, there is a real number. And I think we need to allow for that in that increase that went from 230 to 309 approximately.
So are you supporting the full amount, 319?
You know, if we want to make, if, it's not a matter of supporting or not supporting. I think that, you know, that if you, it sounds to me more like you're looking for a symbolic cut than a real cut. You're not like saying...
Well, a cut's a cut. We're talking with real money.
You're not saying to go to $150,000.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, and I don't disagree with Trustee Schnoll that we need to start cutting it down. And if we set a 5% cut or a 10% cut, I don't think SOPAC will fall apart. I just don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to end the trend, I don't want to stop the trend if we're moving forward. So if I was going to support a cut, I would be, I would say it should be a minimal cut, not something that's substantial, that would cut them, especially considering that whether we have, you know, that cost, that number between 50 and 85,000 that we've added on, I think that should be allowed for in our discussion, which I don't know if you allowed for that when you were asking your questions before.
I enthusiastically agree that Mark has done an admirable job in the last year. But I do disagree with Tony, and I have the same impression that Sheena has, that Sheena has, that last year, it was a one-time infusion that we were going to do to support SOPAC as part of us picking up the bonding for the building, taking over the building ourselves. And in fact, we had a little dialogue about betting.
I think I won that bet.
Yeah, you did. It was betting your salary.
Are you paying?
But I think we have discussed this as well in the finance committee, and one question, Barry, what, what level did we put into the budget? It was a discounted amount, but there is, I think there was, what's in there now, although there's some fungible monies in there, was reflected, I think, a $20,000 reduction. But I did have, and were you finished? Because I did have some additional questions. First, I would certainly echo everything, Mr. Packer, Mr. Leitner, for, at least in my brief tenure here, the turnaround has been remarkable from, at SOPAC. I certainly commend the efforts, certainly Mr. Leitner's long-term generosity, both financial and probably more importantly with his time. And certainly the trends, you know, look good. And looking at the numbers, everything looks very positive. One of the things and one of the challenges sort of for me in evaluating it, and I think for everyone, is that, and just for the public's benefit, SOPAC operates on a fiscal year from July 1 to June 30, whereas we budget on a calendar year. And obviously, that what you've provided, you know, with your forecast, you're now, I guess, three weeks out from actually ending it, so it hopefully is a reasonably accurate forecast, barring any surprises in the next three weeks. And I do know last year where we, in our budget, we appropriated, I think, again, I think it was 309.5, so it was up an additional 70 from what had been sort of the historic 239.5. We sort of front-loaded, if you will, the payments to accommodate your fiscal year. So we paid, it wasn't evenly distributed over our calendar year budget. More was given to you, and that was well-discussed, and it clearly appears to have paid off in terms of helping with your balance sheet for your grant applications, and again, commend you on that. My real question is, looking at the forecast and the document you provided, you know, from our perspective, sort of of the money that we budget in our year, half of it maybe goes towards still part of your fiscal year that's ending in three weeks, and half of it's your next fiscal year. So the first question, I guess, is, what does the projection look like for next year? Do you think the trends continue? Or, so that's question number one. But then the second, in the spreadsheet, and I apologize because we did get it last week, I did not have an opportunity to really go through it until this weekend, and I had hoped to possibly get to it today, did not have an opportunity to do so. So I don't want to turn this into like, really, but do you, do you happen to have your spreadsheet or no?
I beg your pardon?
Do you happen to have that spreadsheet you gave us?
I do.
With you? The question I have is twofold. When, I do see that there's, there's the village programming stipend, but under contributed revenue, it reflects 319. I thought it was 309, but there may have been some additional payments in there. But in your 2013, 14, in the budget column to the far right, it looks like you had originally only anticipated 183, which is curious, because that would have been lower even than the historic amount. But then your forecast is premised on the 239.5, which was the, going back to the original amount. And so assuming in 2013, 14-year fiscal year, you got 239.5, I think you end up showing in your forecast, that's the $43,000 net profit. And I'm certainly not suggesting that I would want to live on that thin of a razor margin. So I certainly can appreciate that you would want it, that, you know, you're only one kind of surprise away from being in the, in the red again. But I guess, so my question is, in the spreadsheet, where you have the forecast, at least for your fiscal year, where it's currently reflected the 239.5, whatever is given above that, you just add that, and that would then help improve ultimately the bottom line?
Yes.
In this fiscal year that's going to end in three weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure I understood the spreadsheet correctly.
Yes. And it will, as Tony alluded to, or Mr. Leitner alluded to earlier, will significantly help us with cash flow during a period that's generally fallow for us during the summertime.
Okay. Well, and there is, and certainly, there's the issue of budgeting and there's the issue of cash flow. And obviously, we do have the ability, if it's a cash flow issue, you know, in terms of front-loading payments, again, if it helps you with the cash flow versus the overall, and I understand your, you know, your revenues fluctuate when you get them, that would be one way of addressing, if, you know, if it's primarily a cash flow issue, that's certainly something to discuss, and I'm, you know, sure something that we could work with on. But, and then the other is just the overall net amount, and that's where I was looking at the spreadsheet and trying to figure, okay, whatever we add on to that just helps the bottom line. And again, I'm certainly not suggesting that I, you know, tremendous, you had actually an operating deficit the year before, and you've turned it around, and you're heading in the right direction. But I fully appreciate your desire to not have that small of a margin of error.
What, of course, we had to do for budget purposes, to work with the numbers that we had, that we could be sure of for our fiscal, for our fiscal year. But as I pointed out in my memorandum, because of this discrepancy between calendar year and fiscal year, and by the way, the way I approached it last March, March of 2013, when I was speaking with our trustee Levison and yourself, and also then with trustee Schnoll, was, okay, let's look at it on a calendar year basis, your basis, and how we would be able to deploy those funds during the, what I consider the startup period, which is one full season of SOPAC under Mark's leadership. He came in in March of last year. He was actually behind the scenes before that, but, you know, it's really just over a year that we've had, and I'm delighted with the results. We are not in the red. That's terrific. But we're awful close. And so I think, you know, the flexibility of being able to use a slightly larger pot and being able to ask you, depending on how the cash flow works for the summer, which we'll know pretty quickly, yes, we may be asking, again, to kind of front-load that until we put the shows on sale with our new box office system, which will be terrific for everybody, beginning, two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think, from my perspective, the way I've seen it as we build that budget from last year, and why those numbers are where they are.
Sure. Okay. And no, and so, you know, just again, reiterating, from our perspective, obviously, we're a much larger budget, we have certain amounts in the bank. We are, I think, in a position, and to the extent that helps address the problem that it's a cash flow, you know, if we can pay you more in the first few months than later when you start taking in your revenues, I just wanted to make sure I fully understood the spreadsheet.
There's a tangential or peripheral issue that, I'm not sure the village would embrace as much as I embrace personally through my experience in the fundraising realm, but it is better to project strength than weakness with funders. Funders want to support an institution that is successful. Our having multiple streams of revenue is an incredible strength. Our having the support of this village is an incredible strength. Posting surplus at the end of the year is an incredible strength. It helps leverage other support. So I would implore you to think about your support of this organization in that context, as well as what it does economically and what it provides to the citizens of the town. as well as what it does economically and what it provides to the citizens of the town.
Okay, me again. One of the things that I'd like my colleagues to consider is, I went back to some of the things that we put out to the community. For me, it's always managing expectations. What did we say? As you said a year ago, it's about a culture of assessment, evaluating what we did, adjusting our expectations, making sure that at least we're very transparent and honest with the people who are subsidizing. A miraculous performing arts center. Again, can't reiterate enough. I think you personally are doing a wonderful job. So I did spend a lot of time and lots of paper, you wouldn't be too pleased, trustee Clark, but I did have to print it all out. While I was only elected last year, I've been watching presentations from SOPAC since the very beginning. So, you know, the managing expectations of the public, I don't think has ever really been a big strength of the Board of Trustees on what next year will bring, what the following year, et cetera. I think that when this was positioned rightfully or wrongfully, that within three to five years, we could look at reducing or eliminating the entire subsidy, including allowing the Village to get the pass-through from, at the time, Clearview, now Bowtie. I don't think that's a realistic expectation. I think that you should expect that there will be a subsidy from the Village. That's our investment into having a performing arts center here. And I think by taking ownership of the building, that was a huge step for you and the funders, and then looking at your balance sheets, I think expecting a $200,000 pass-through, hopefully more from Bowtie, is a reasonable expectation. So what I would like us to do is focus on the direct subsidy, roughly 300,000, we could say 320,000. And I had shared this with trustee Schnell, is why don't we set a timeframe from three to five years, likely five years, where our goal, both SOPAC and the Board of Trustees, is to slowly reduce that direct financial subsidy. And in running some of my own numbers, just to see what that would look like, the first thing that I did was I took the whole number divided by five years and came up with a set amount and said, Sheena, the way you vote is, that was the fifth year, the next year, you slowly reduce it, and then it's managing expectations. We know how we're going to reduce the direct subsidy, and you know exactly, without coming before the entire governing body, what to expect for the following year. And so for me, just a proposal, is that for this year, obviously, I'm not going to be supporting at the 320 amount, or maybe 310, I don't think that's clear. But what I would like to see is an incremental decrease this year, which next year will go up a little bit more, third year, fourth year, and fifth year, so that in five years, we have a plan and expectation that at least the direct financial subsidy from the Village to SOPAC will be eliminated. And I think that manages expectations. How those numbers work out is, year one is 45, 55, 65, 75, and 80. I really hope those add up, or else that would be embarrassing. But I'm pretty sure that comes to close to $320,000. So what I would be willing to support this year, which is above last year's amount, or I'm sorry, above the, prior to last year's amount, which was 239, but still below where we were this year at 320, would be 275. Without asking for comments from the Board, do you think it's a realistic expectation that we focused on the 300,000 subsidy in a five-year timeframe?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I think that is, that will place an undue burden on this institution to expect to eliminate that amount of money in five years. Would I, would I work towards that goal assiduously? I would. But can I guarantee that in five years, I would make up that amount of money from other sources? So much depends upon the vagaries of the economy, you know, what institutional funders do in terms of their philanthropic priorities. And I just, I think that that, that's a, that is overly ambitious. I think it would, I think with an organization, as I said, that does not have a cash reserve, that does not have a sinking fund, that does not have an endowment, that does not adequately compensate its employees currently, employees many of whom have not had raises in years, that is understaffed for what it achieves and risks burnout, I think that there are too many other variables at play for me to be able to stand here before you and honestly tell you that in five years, we won't need any money from the Village.
See, and I bring up the five-year timeline because, and I sent the link out to the Board of Trustees, is that in terms of managing the expectations of the public, at least at this point in time last year, what we said our collective goals were, was within a five-year timeframe, three to five years, it would not only be the direct $300,000 subsidy, but the Village would start collecting the pass-through from Bowtie. So I'm trying to figure out a way, whatever the answer is, and I admire your honesty, I like that you're not standing up here and saying, great idea, Sheena, okay, it works out. Where, I guess without the plan of what you're going to be working on this fall, I feel like we restart this process every year, where it's awkward for you. It's certainly awkward for all of us to have to do it like this. But how do we manage the expectation? What can we realistically think?
That's a fair question. You know, I've only been here a little over a year, and for me, it's been, you know, jumping from the frying pan into the fire and trying to keep up and learn about this enterprise and how to sustain it, which is why I asked the Board to go through strategic planning now, because I feel like I have enough institutional knowledge that I can make some good, informed decisions with our strategic stakeholders. And that includes you. And that's why I believe that at the end of that process, I will have at least a three-year horizon for what our finances will look like. And I would hope that that's going to include a reduced subsidy from the Village during that time. And so I don't expect that we'll be standing here next year doing a Groundhog Day, that you'll actually have a document that you can hold me accountable for, that says, this is how we intend to manage our growth.
And this will be the first time that you are presenting the plan that you've been involved in since you've only been here a year?
I'm sorry?
This, this plan that you're preparing?
Yes.
That is going to be a comprehensive plan and very informative with your strategic look at the institution for the next year, several years?
Three years. Nobody does planning now, or very few institutions do planning for a longer horizon, because there's just too many external factors that-
So what time period are you looking at in your plan?
Well, we'll be looking, I mean, the strategic plan that will be developed will be completed sometime late in the fall, and it will take effect, you know, midway through our year, but it will have a pro forma for, I guess it'll be fiscal year 2016, 17, and 18.
Okay.
Well, I guess we do need, because we're going to be adopting the budget at the June 23 meeting, right now, I believe, as Mr. Lewis indicated, I believe, 300,000 placeholder, 289.5 built into the budget. I think everybody got to see what the difference was in variation from going up to the full request or cutting it back. So I think we just need to reach what that decision is so that we know exactly what number to insert into the budget that we adopt.
And Mr. Lewis, before we get to that part of the conversation, could you maybe just logistically speak to what ability or not ability exists for the Board to increase that number outside of that budget line or outside of the prepared budget?
Well, I mean, and that was going to be my first point. There is not a specific SOPAC line in our budget. The SOPAC subsidy has historically and continues to be found within the recreation budget. Perhaps it was from SOPAC originally being conceived as part of the Recreation Cultural Affairs, but that's where it's always been when I got here. So it's embedded within that number. So, you know, where the budget goes and if, certainly, the total and sort of the estimated number that was put in there after sort of given the different scenarios, how much if it's an extra 70, how much is an extra 50, how much is cut in half to 35, how much of it returns to the 239.5, were all scenarios that I laid out in the memo. You know, ultimately, what the Board decides, if to increase globally somewhere within the budget from what's in there now, would almost necessarily, unless depending even the line, I'd have to do the math, but I think would probably, well, may or may not require reintroduction of the budget. But again, what, the budget itself doesn't lock you into any particular amount to them, the budget document that gets adopted, ultimately what you agree, and if need be, you know, to find the money from elsewhere. So I don't think your hands are particularly tied. I think I did, again, try and put in numbers and scenarios of where it would reflect, but it's not a, in that sense, a decision that has to be made because there isn't a line item in the official state budget document that says SOPAC.
But it does change the percent increase, though. You provided those numbers.
Well, yeah, certainly under any of the scenarios. So obviously, and we had talked about this, and, you know, we, there seemed to be a collective consensus that there, you know, was a hope or an expectation, I think, that there was some progress reflected in some sort of reduction. That's why I gave you all the different scenarios. We kind of put in a placeholder amount, certainly, and I wouldn't speak for, if there is a consensus, because I don't think you've all decided, and I certainly don't vote. But it did indicate that if it went below what was in there, that's an easy thing. There's no, definitely no reintroduction, doesn't impact the budget. If it was to increase, I'd have to really run the numbers and see whether the line, there are limits on the increase in any particular line based on a percentage of the line under the state budget law, that if you increase above that via an amendment to the budget, you have to reintroduce and start the process again. I could run those calculations to the extent there was consensus to go above what was in there, but.
In my opinion, I think Mr. Lewis came up with a budget that we all felt was, you know, though challenging and troublesome in terms of the magnitude of the overall effect it has on property taxes, it was very reasonable. And that's what our job is to balance, you know, with services that we provide our community and offset it by the costs. The number that was entered in the budget that we sort of had heard before, the 289.5, I think, was a number that I'm comfortable with. And I think until Mr. Packer and the governors have an opportunity to put together a long-term plan, I don't think we should be penalizing them. I think they showed really good progress. I think most of the community will say that. I think, having heard from people I spoke with in terms of the programs that are here on this site, and knowing the plans that are going outside, it also, there are things that are done, trustee Rosner mentioned some of the intangibles, such as using this facility. There are also things such as the movies on the hill, you know, something that we wanted to add to the programming for the community, and Mr. Packer just readily agreed that that was something that they could, they have to put labor into, there's a cost to it, but they've added that to the community services. So in my mind, we are showing a reduction off of last year. You could argue how, you know, how significant or severe it would be. I don't think this is the time for severity, in my opinion, given the value we get from this. I think it's really important, and I look forward to the, seeing what comes out of the three-year plan in terms of directionally where we can get to. But in my opinion, I think the budget item that we have in there right now is a good as number, as we could expect.
I would tend to agree with trustee Schnell, and I second most of his sentiments. So I would go along with that 289.5.
And that's the conversation that we've had previously.
Is that the recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't support the number at that amount, but I might by the second reading. I would like, if we can discuss outside of the meeting, just some of the things that I wanted to run by you. I know with the timetable and your gala, I'm not opposed to supporting it at that level, but I want to understand more details than what we could do tonight and what was in the budget.
I'm happy to avail myself at any time.
Great answer. Okay, wonderful. So for the time being, we're moving forward, keeping it at the 289.5? Is that correct? Is that the agreement on, Walter?
I'm in 289.5. Yeah, I feel like we worked at that budget for quite some time, trying to keep things as reasonable as we could, and I, you know, I don't want Barry to then be Robin Peater, pay Paul, kind of move things from somewhere else, and it just means something else is going to suffer.
The only other thing, and certainly when Tony and Mark and I met, I said, of all the years to come, asking when we got hit with that back pension bill of $368,000 from 2008 through 11, and that just made the budget that much more challenging.
I do have a question. The run rate has been for six months at that level, right? What we have been currently supporting them is at that number? It's this year's budget.
Now they're, they're-
Or is it running against last year's?
You mean what have been the payments this year?
Correct. The run rate, yes.
I think we actually went back. Bear with me. Anybody else have anything else? Why, look it up.
I'll just make a general point while Mr. Lewis is looking that up, that I would echo a lot of the sentiments that have been made by some of my colleagues on the Board, and I guess especially as far as how incredible of a job SOPAC has done to not only elevate its status within South Orange but outside of South Orange. You know, I got an email from someone at the League of Municipalities asking to chair a panel on arts in New Jersey and tourism because of SOPAC. That's a great opportunity for us. People see SOPAC as a regional leader, they've heard about us, and I think that echoes a lot of the feelings that a lot of us have gotten. We go outside of town, and people are talking about SOPAC, and they're excited about it, and that that is a really monumental achievement. And so there was, you know, certainly a concern in the back and maybe a little bit the front of my mind when we had this discussion a year ago about increasing the amount and what that would do. And as we were having a conversation about taking the debt over the building, would this really produce the results that you guys were promising? And it did. And you guys delivered on that. So I would just, you know, put down that, you know, although the idea of a kind of Groundhog Day situation, we're coming back every year and asking for the same, you know, amount, and it's, you know, only one more year, kind of like we're doing with the sewer fees, although that's not our fault, is that I don't think that, I don't see that happening just on a personal level, because I think that you and the organization has demonstrated that when given the opportunity, when given a little bit of the resources, that you really do put it to good use. I mean, it's not just going to plug holes here and there, but it's going towards activities that are continuing to elevate the status. And I saw that at the annual gala, the excitement and the energy was definitely there. And again, you know, people are talking about SOPAC outside of South Orange, and, you know, and that's a, that's a really great thing. So even as we, you know, make this sort of anticipated decision about what we want to do going forward, you know, I think that there is, I know, at least from personal, and I think from many of my colleagues, if not all of them, a lot of respect for what everybody has done to turn SOPAC in a direction that there seems to be a lot of success in the future.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that.
Quickly for the answer. Now, we, the payments to date have been back at the 239.5 amount, because until I had some direction from the Board, that it was not a one-time. I wasn't going to front-load it. So they'll get a nice retro check as well if this goes the way it sounds like it's going.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful questions. I appreciate it very much. I appreciate your consideration and your due diligence.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you both.
Okay. Before we move on, we've made the habit twice so far tonight of moving something up on the agenda because we had people here. So if it is okay with the rest of the Board, I just want to poll quickly, people here, how many folks are interested in the Village Hall renovation? Okay, so it's a majority of the audience.
You're going to do public comments?
So, well, no, what I wanted to do is just move the discussion up as well. So we can do the public comment first, so that that can inform our discussion, but just so that people don't have to stick around. That discussion is the last item on the conference agenda. That is probably not happening until at least 11:00 or 11:30, probably later at this rate. And I don't want to ask people to wait around that long if they want to hear our discussion about it. So if it's okay with everybody, I want to do the public comment period, which is up next anyway, but then just move the discussion, as long as, because we're moving it from the conference to the special meeting, that we're not going to take any action, because that's how it was listed, was not for action, but just for discussion. If everybody's okay moving that up, I'd be happy to do that.
Now, do we have to close the meeting and reopen?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think we just need to not take any formal action on this agenda item, just because it wasn't listed.
I would actually like to suggest something else that we, and I put this in the email to everyone, that I think that we should, this discussion could easily take two, three, four hours and involve some back work to be done by the Village Administrator. And I would like to actually put together a special meeting to just discuss Village Hall, the pros and cons of the rental versus the purchase, et cetera, and everything, because I wouldn't even want to try and have a two-hour discussion tonight at 11:30, especially since we do not have all the backup information that we're going to need for an intelligent decision. And I would suggest that we could do this in the next couple of weeks, that we have a special meeting just on this. a special meeting just on this.
Are there others who...
Yeah, I would like to spell out those, those specific items that we need for real intelligent discussion, and I have communicated that in a number of emails as well as a chat form.
I was okay when Trustee Ross, I think more discussion about it is good, but I think at least for tonight, it's not worthwhile scheduling a special meeting unless there's an indication from the board that we want to move forward in that direction. And so, I would allow the public to speak, have a discussion, decide where we want to proceed from that point. And if it's a special meeting, I, you know, I'll, I'll have meetings every night, that's not a problem. But let's see if we can get some level of consensus here first that a special meeting is even needed.
Yeah, then I would just say if we're going to have the discussion tonight, which we should do, especially for whoever's here that wanted to hear something about it, but maybe the beginning part of the discussion is focused on whether we're going to have that follow-up meeting. Does that kind of make sense?
That sounds like a plan. That sounds reasonable.
Okay. Do we have the sign and sheet up here, or no?
I'd also like to request that we move the podium away so Trustee Schnor and myself can see the public when they speak.
Well, normally, they, there's a public mic down there. Usually, the public has a microphone down there.
Yeah, the public is...
In the middle.
Is in the middle tonight.
Is it that one or that one? Do you have a Union card? Does he have his Union card?
Yeah, do I get paid for it? So, we'll do our public comment period. At this point, I'll run down the list, and obviously, if your name isn't on the list, you can still feel free to speak afterwards. Elliot Ganek? Ganek? Yeah, just, yeah, come up. There's a microphone right here at the front, and if you could just state your name and address for the record, and just be mindful to limit your comments to three minutes so we can get to everybody, please.
Elliot Ganek, 125 Rinder Road. I came to talk about the ordinance about Rinder Road's apartment. The ordinance calls for the parking amendment to be from, from South Orange Avenue to Western Drive. There's a section of Rinder Road that goes back to Ridgewood Road, and we're having a parking problem there now. If you limit the parking on the rest of Rinder Road, they're all going to be coming down to the, the other end of Rinder Road by Ridgewood Road. So, I think if you're going to, if you're going to do this ordinance, it should include all of Rinder Road, from South Orange Avenue all the way to Ridgewood Road. Am I clear?
Yes, thank you. Alan Levine?
Good evening. My name is Alan Levine. I'm at 131 Rinder Road. I happen to be Mr. Ganek's neighbor, and I'm speaking about the same issue. Just to support what Mr. Ganek had said, we are already experiencing issues concerning parking, particularly along a curve from Ridgewood Road into, into Rinder Road, which is actually creating sort of a dangerous situation because it's becoming sort of one lane. We're not, we as residents just heard about this ordinance last week. We're not, it wasn't made clear to us why this ordinance has been proposed. We're supposing it's to limit the commuter parking at the end of Rinder Road by South Orange Avenue. In the past few years, we've suddenly incurred a lot of commuter parking at our, at our end of the road as well, and just to support what Mr. Ganek said, it seems to us that if there is a limit at one end of the, of the road, it should apply to the entire street. It seems it should be consistent. If there's going to be limits on one end of the street, it should apply to the entire street. So, either it should all, the entire street should be limited, or none of the streets should be limited. That, in speaking to our neighbors, that's, that's the position that a number of us feel would make sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, I'm sorry, I can't read the last eight, from 8 Rinder Road?
My name's George Chin. I'm on 8 Rinder Road. I came, just what the other gentleman was asking for, I'm one of the houses that's affected because they park in front of my house every day. There are days that I can't, we can't back the car almost. So, if you go do it, I was wondering why don't you do the whole street? Just, you know, the two, I'll park them all the way across, so, so that's fair for every one of the whole block. That's all I, that's, that's all I'm saying. That's what I was wondering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Perkett?
John Perkett, 661 Longview Road. I have four quick things. Number one, I'd like to know when the Glenview Road is going to happen, the paving of it, and whether it's going to include curbing. In terms of SOPAC, I think it sounds like we're going to be subsidizing them ad infinitum. I wish you could get a commitment from them so that they could exercise some pressure on bowtie to start showing some indie and, and art films like we were all promised, instead of the shoot-'em-up action crap that we get. Number three, I don't think we should be wasting our attorney's time and money on ridiculous resolutions about the telecom industry, of which this board has no particular knowledge or influence. It's absolute nonsense. And number four, really is the main issue I'm hearing, it's Village Hall renovation. I have spoken on this issue before, and I want to be on the record again, reiterating that I do not think that we are in a position as a town to spend the kind of money that we're looking to spend on a, on a renovation. And I use the word renovation advisedly, because it's really not a renovation. The building has so deteriorated that we're going to be building it back brick by brick. It just doesn't make sense to me. We, we seem to be renting very usable space. It's great. It seems to be working well. I just don't get it. I understand the historical issues that have been raised and so on and so forth. Listen, I'm all in favor of history. I spent a ton of money on my house, kind of restoring it and, and keeping it in line with, with the times in which it was built. But this, this ship has sailed already. This building has no longer served its purpose, and I would argue that at least a proposal that was put forth by Ms. Cullen to see about its marketability should be done. It, it really makes no sense that we're not exploring every other option at this point, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Lorman?
Good evening, everybody. Trustees, President Torpe, thank you for hearing me out this evening. I've never come to speak about any particular issues in my 11 years of living here until today. This, this is a big one. It's the, it's the renovation, and I would strongly urge the board to consider the possible sale of the, of the property. I know it's been considered in the past, as I understand it, a couple of years ago, was put out for expressions of interest in probably the worst real estate market in recent history. As a real estate developer, my job is to acquire and identify properties, and I can tell you that I'm looking at properties now that I, I looked and dismissed a couple of years ago because of, of the market conditions. So, now that the conditions have improved, I would definitely recommend taking the time in the next several months, which apparently are available without derailing anything, if I understand it correctly, to reconsider the possibility of selling the property. It's, it's, obviously, it's a huge undertaking. It's tremendous cost to the town. I mean, we talk about $10,000 or $20,000 off of SOPAC budget. This is millions of dollars, so the magnitude is incredible. So, I would just strongly urge everybody here to consider this and the use of the time for a possible sale of the, of the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Greenstone?
Hi there. Scott Greenstone, 253 Irving Avenue. I'm here to just reiterate what everyone's saying about Village Hall renovation. The market's changed. Trustee Cullen has a great idea that we can, at the same time as you're going through with the asbestos abatement, look for a buyer. You guys were all elected to look out for the best interests of the residents and the village, and if you don't take this route, you're not serving your purpose. So, you really need to consider looking for a buyer at the same time as the asbestos abatement's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Chandros?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Robert Chandros, 108 West Montrose Avenue. I had come here originally, my plan was to talk about the Village Hall project, but I think it's pretty clear that it's going to take a more thorough meeting by your board to discuss the options and what you might want to consider doing, and you're not going to do that tonight. It's already 10 o'clock. But I want to talk about another issue that relates to that and other things. First of all, the record of this board and its predecessors at running projects and keeping the cost within budget is horrendous, lest I remind you that just recently you discovered a little matter of about $370,000 or so for a pension obligation, which should have been reserved against, but nobody thought about setting up a reserve. I don't know whose fault that was, but I find it shocking. Secondly, we have the asbestos abatement, and I'm not going to quibble about that, but it just shows the extent to which you can underestimate the cost of reconstruction. And we don't even have a budget for this project. You've never passed a resolution that says, "We are prepared to allocate X dollars, and this is how we're going to raise the X dollars." You've never done that. So, you've never told the residents of the village how much it's going to cost and how you're going to pay for it. And I don't, for God's sakes, think how you could possibly consider doing this without having done that. But I want to spend the rest of my time talking about SOPAC. The more things change, the more they stay the same with regard to SOPAC. Year in and year out, it's the same thing for the last eight years. "Well, we missed the grants. We don't have any money. We can't do this." First of all, I don't see why the heck we should be spending money for programs that benefit communities other than South Orange. That's not, as a taxpayer, or more importantly, as a stockholder in this community, that is an outrage. I didn't invest my money here to finance projects to benefit people who don't live in South Orange. If that's what you want to do, do whatever you want, make them pay for it. You're not doing that. We were promised several years ago that SOPAC would hold an annual meeting for the public to discuss their finances. We had one of those, and I think the chairman of the board of SOPAC was so horrified by the negative feedback he got, that he's never done it again. I'd like to ask if they'd be required to do it. But more importantly, I'd like to know why there was no mention on the agenda that SOPAC was going to be discussed, no material provided for the public, and essentially, a blindsided debate about something that we had no input to. We need to stop subsidizing them, and we need to adopt a path to reduce that subsidy. And if they have grandiose plans, let them go out and raise the money. The fact is, corporate profits are at a record-high level, foundations have enormous amounts of money, and if they're not giving it to us now, there's no reason to believe they're going to give it to us a year or two down the road. And I think it's time to begin to close the trough and to tell the pigs, "You better go suck elsewhere because you're not going to get it out of the taxpayer in this community." I'm tired of being taken advantage of.
Stephen Kitzinger?
Good evening, Village President Torpe, trustees, members of board trustees, Village staff. For those of you who know me, you know the idea of...
Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry. Steve Kitzinger, 110 Mayhew Drive. For those of you who know me, the idea of me coming up with something prepared to speak is beyond absurd, because I never do that, in my personal life, my professional life. But this issue is so important. That is the Village Hall renovation. Now, while moving forward with the reconstruction of Village Hall, I just want you to simultaneously explore the possibility of some other use for the property, whether it results in a sale of the building with a ground lease, so that the village can assist in obtaining a liquor license for a possible restaurant use or something. But we have to recognize that our village's infrastructure is just crumbling. We already pay some of the highest taxes in, in the area. In addition to Village Hall, deferred or ignored maintenance has taken its toll on all, really, all of our properties. The only one in decent shape is the Firehouse, and that's because we spent untold sums of money on repairing it over many, many years, just a few years ago. There's absolutely no reason to suspect that we won't have the same result in Village Hall. The proposed Village Hall renovation is already well beyond the original budget. The original construction budget in December of 2011 was budgeted for $4.2 million for the construction cost, and that included the asbestos abatement and a 10% overrun. Well, now, it's at $5.2 million with an 8% overrun, and the asbestos abatement, which has run us over $500,000, including the consultant cost, is over $500,000. So, already, we haven't broken down on the rebuild, and we're a million and a half over, and we're probably a year and a half behind schedule. So, we're already 25% over budget, a year and a half late. We've incurred nearly a year's rental expense on the two-year project, and we haven't started, put, we haven't nailed, a single nail into a board yet. It's really unfortunate that this board has appeared to embark on this journey with no long-term plan as to whether or not you're willing to revisit it at any point in time. Someone made a decision at some point a few years ago, and you're sticking with it. I think you owe the residents of this village the respect and the courtesy, as well as, and your own residents yourself, to reconsider this, decide what's in the best interest, and come to a conclusion. I don't think you could be criticized for revisiting the issue, but I certainly think you should, and you will be criticized for not doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Sandow?
Rob Sandow, 69 South Center Street. I'm also here to talk about Village Hall. We've had, it's been said, you know, over and over again that those who fail to learn from the mistakes of the past are doomed to repeat them, right? In this case, it's the, the track record of the village government in managing construction projects has been, has, speaks for itself in terms of cost overruns, time overruns, bringing, bringing projects in late, not on time, not on budget. Okay? So, what can be done? I, whenever I hear words like unavoidable or unforeseen, I see this constantly in, in things like, you know, reports about why we have to spend an extra $230,000 on asbestos, right? We spent $80,000 having the building asbestos evaluation done, so that we were supposed to know exactly what was in there. Well, we apparently missed by 50% or more, and, and now we're, now we're going to be paying for that with, with a change order for $230,000. It makes sense to me that Trustee Cullen's proposal that we take another look at what the economic viability of that building is, that we might be able to sell it and get some, something back for it, especially now that there will be no asbestos in it, so the, the marketability might be a little bit better at that point. Then we don't, then we take the $7 million or whatever that number will... projects has been, speaks for itself in terms of cost overruns, time overruns, bringing projects in late, not on time, not on budget. Okay, so, what can be done? Whenever I hear words like unavoidable or unforeseen, I see this constantly in things like, you know, reports about why we have to spend an extra $230,000 on asbestos, right? We spent $80,000 having the building asbestos evaluation done, so that we were supposed to know exactly what was in there. Well, we apparently missed by 50% or more, and now we're, now we're going to be paying for that with a change order for $230,000. It makes sense to me that Trustee Column's proposal that we take another look at what the economic viability of that building is, that we might be able to sell it and get something back for it, especially now that there will be no asbestos in it, so the marketability might be a little bit better at that point. Then we don't, then we take the $7 million or whatever that number will wind up eventually being, and we use it to fix our roads and our streets. You know, we have, driving down the streets after this particularly bad winter is an abomination, and that $7 million could go a long way towards just making it nicer to drive down the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Ree Toop Pancholi?
Hi, I'm Ree Toop Pancholi. I live at 234 South Ridgewood Road. I'm here to speak about three issues, the first being Rinda Road. I emailed, I think, most of the trustees earlier today, as well as Mark Hartwick. I'm speaking on behalf of a bunch of Rinda Road residents who weren't able to be here today because they're actually at our local neighborhood association meeting, but we too believe that the ordinance that is on the agenda today should be amended to cover all of Rinda Road for the reasons that have already been expressed before, but there are at least five to six cars, people who probably don't even live in our town, parking there all day. There's buses that go to the South Mountain School that pass on that exact strip of curve, and I mean, having five to six cars park there all day only endangers our students, as well as the buses, as well as people who just need to get out of their house and move on with their lives. So, I think if you're going to pass this ordinance, either table it and talk to all of Rinda Road, not just the particular residents who complained, or don't pass it at all and write the correct ordinance so that it actually covers the entire street and covers all of the population. The second reason I'm here is about the Village Hall renovation. I too believe, as a new taxpayer, that this board should take the opportunity to allow, to see what other possibilities might exist, either sell the building, maybe it's mixed use, but we did spend money in 2011. We have spent considerable amount of money on a lot of expert reports in this town, and in my experience as a government employee, the government always does that, but it doesn't enact what consultants tell them to do. So spending money repeatedly, whether it's redevelopment, whether it's that project or this project, but not taking into consideration experts' opinions only hurts everyone. And then the third thing is, I too love SOPAC, I think they're great, but I think that when we have members of the public come and ask the budget, ask for the budget to be increased, there should be more of a meticulous screening that's going on here. It's not very transparent why they're asking for $300,000 this year. I mean, are advertising costs increasing? Are there other ways that they could cut possibly one member of their staff and save this town a little bit money? No one knows, and we're just all here, sitting here, saying, "Okay, it's all right to approve $300,000," as if people here in this town are already burdened with a ton of expenses. I mean, I just got a letter as a mom that my daycare costs are going up. Guess what? Like, my entire salary this month is going to go to daycare, and I think that applies for a lot of people in this town. So it's really unfair that no one's speaking up, no one's talking about the budget. Everyone loves SOPAC, we get it, but we, you know, we expect harder questions from all of you.
Thank you. Michael Goldberg?
Hello, Board of Trustees. Michael Goldberg, 39, Mayhew Drive. It's kind of ironic that we've spent the past hour or so talking about SOPAC, because those of you that have been following this, we've been talking about SOPAC and the costs of it for about 15 years now, since about 99 when it was first envisioned. First, it was going to be $4 million, and then $10 million, and the next thing you know was $14, $15 million. And now we're potentially going down the same road with Village Hall. It was going to be a $4 million project, then a $6 million, current estimates are about $7 million, and as someone said, we haven't even, you know, drilled, hit a single nail into a board yet. So I think it's a great time to kind of take a step back and to revisit this idea of refloating the RFEI to see if there's an interest in the property. You all know we did that back in 2011, and there wasn't much interest. I fully acknowledge and concede that, but we also know and acknowledge that was the, you know, the depths of the worst recession we've all seen in our lifetimes. So taking another look at that, I think, is really worthwhile. You know, I, you know, I sat up there with all of you and understood the importance of the building and the significance of the building, and I don't think anyone's saying, "Tear the building down." And honestly, I was a little skeptical that the village function could move elsewhere. It was always tied to Village Hall. But recently, I had a, I was at a first night meeting in your new facility, and Mr. Lewis and Trustee Column gave me a tour of the new facility, and I was blown away. It was an incredible facility. You guys did a great job on the move. From what I hear, it went pretty smoothly. It's bright, it's open, it's clean. Employees work, you know, together in a much more modern environment. It's very different than the disjointed environment of Village Hall. And, you know, in today's environment, it just makes more sense. Village Hall is too big for the amount of employees that we have, so we're spending an enormous amount of money to renovate unneeded space, and it's really outlived its usefulness as a municipal building. So again, I would like to encourage you to refloat the RFEI. To Trustee Rosner's point earlier about having a special meeting to talk about this, I think that's great, but honestly, I think that should happen in parallel. I don't think you should make a decision whether you sell it, whether you, you know, whatever. Put out the RFEI, see if there's an interest first, because it's hard, it's going to be impossible to make a decision until you see if there's an interest. I think, I suspect there's an interest, and I don't think it would take a whole lot of money to put it out there, but find out. Again, I think what we did three years ago really isn't relevant. I think it's worth putting the RFEI out again and just see if there's that interest, because I think there's enormous potential. Taxpayers in this town deserve for you to, you know, do the due diligence. Look yourself in the eye, in the mirror, and say that you've explored absolutely every option before you go down that path of spending seven or eight million dollars. I think you owe it to yourselves and to all of us, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Yep, just please come forward.
I'm Richard Fishbein from 411 Thorndown Street. I recently asked three local vets, "Why is it still dangerous for me to bring home a dog from the JAC if the shelter vet says the dog is healthy?" Each knew the issues and the timeline. Vets talked to each other. Each told me it's not dangerous, there is no public health reason to bar the animal leaving. The last one, the most experienced, closed the office door and said, "If you repeat this, I'll deny saying it." And then he proceeded to tell me the reasons why the "take no prisoner" stance that the village is taking is what they were doing. Most of the reasons were worthy of discussion. The last, a personal antagonism the village would not dare mention. None of the reasons related to public health, none justifying continued quarantine or closure of the shelter. None that would make shipping stray South Orange dogs and cats to Newark to be killed, which is currently going on, palatable. The initial failure to isolate the ringworm cats was a godsend to the village, a foot in the door, allowing public health to be cited as a cover. I see you claim the shelter is being uncooperative in allowing a reinspection and in addressing the changes, but Mr. Festa and Mr. Lerner have been back inside several times. In early April, they were there, dragging two SPCA officers behind them. Later in April, during a ventilation inspection, and during a kennel picture-taking session by Adam. And just last week, when I was down there, I saw both of them inside for a very long time. They know it's in excellent condition. You claim the JAC controls its own fate. That's false. The village obviously holds all the power, like a young boy with his foot over a bug giggling, the bug is in control just before he crushes it. Your strategy is clear: make the shelter spin its wheels and deplete all its resources. And maybe Ruth suffers a decline in health or worse. A woman who has more integrity and has done more to help animals than... I see the village wants the JAC to pay back all the money you are spending to ship stray South Orange dogs and cats to Newark to be killed. This is, of course, anathema to a no-kill shelter. That letter, heavily lawyered up, was cruel and contemptuous. Everyone knows this story: when Saddam was alive, his victims were shot, and then his henchmen forced the victims' families to pay for the bullets. The perfect analogy: the victims, the nameless South Orange stray dogs and cats; the families, the JAC and supporters. And who is Saddam? Well, Barry Lewis, his name was on the letter. Mr. Lewis, do you really deserve taking the rap for this? Are you really the one directing this reprehensible effort? When you sell your soul, it's not like a pawn shop. Please tell us, you must tell us, who is the mastermind? Mr. Torpe and Mr. Rother? I call on you to guarantee Mr. Lewis can answer without fear of retaliation from you, the personnel committee, or anyone else. Please, transparency.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment? Yep, just come forward. Yep, you just, you can just walk up to the microphone and just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gail Petracca, and although I am not a resident of South Orange, I volunteered at JAC for four years. I don't know how anyone can blame the town for this mess that JAC has gotten itself into. The Department of Health, New Jersey Department of Health, went there, they found 51 violations, they cited them for them. They're well aware of what's going on. The shelter is just not complying, they're resisting, and they're creating a lot of chaos by convincing people that everybody else who isn't for them is against them and wants to kill animals. And that's just a bunch of baloney. And I encourage you to just keep up the effort to straighten this place out, no matter how it may end. The animals are in there, they're languishing since March, and efforts of volunteers who've been banished have been ignored, and it just seems to come down to the dollar for JAC. So don't be intimidated, don't let people chastise you. Nobody blames you for this mess. There are the board, the shelter, they're to blame for this mess, and they need to clean up their act. And it's a very sad thing that's happening, but this is a good thing that it's out in the open now. It's been going for a long time, and volunteers have been getting banned because they speak up. Because they speak the truth, they've been thrown out of the shelter. And we've been, I've been threatened, we're despised, there's a war going on, and this is all politics at the shelter. And how dare we speak up for the animals? And they claim that they care about the animals? They haven't shown it, not now. No one has ever said that these people are intentionally cruel, their intentions were always good in the beginning, but just keeping up with it and the marketing that's required to raise funds hasn't been done, and as a result, they failed, they've fallen behind on the upkeep for the animals. And I just encourage you all to just keep it up, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Ash, White Oak Drive. First of all, they're gone, but I want to thank the Clean Sweep South America team and Public Works and everybody else who's involved. About a week ago, it was either Saturday or Sunday, and I was driving downtown, and there was not one single piece of litter. And I said, "Wow, this is something." And I drove around, and it is clean. So I want to thank everybody who's responsible for that. With regard to SOPAC, I listened tonight, I did send you emails, like everyone else, and I agree with Trustee Schnall completely. I think SOPAC is wonderful. It's a wonderful asset to the town. The word is out, there's no question about that, okay? I am a little disappointed in view of everything that has happened this past year. I think Mark Packer is doing an incredible job in terms of quantity and quality of programming. I think you did the right thing in forgiving the debt, taking it back to make it possible to get, for them to get loans, or grants, I'm sorry, foundations. There has been increased revenues, and so that's why I was a little surprised when they actually asked for the same amount as last year. As I recall, last year, they said, SOPAC said that in three years, they were going to give up the pass-through for the movies, and it was going to the village. So that's $200,000. In five years, they were hoping to eliminate the subsidy or reduce it substantially. I don't think it's ever going to be reduced, okay, completely, okay? So, now we're down to two years and four years, based on what they said last year, and I think that thing is out the window, as a matter of fact, as Sheena said, okay? And I, you have two more years, I don't know what's going to happen with the revenues, losing $200,000 from the movie revenues. I just don't think it's going to work, actually. So I do hope they're going to come up with a business plan, you'll look at it and really decide what you're going to do, because it does look like it's going to be in perpetuity. We've given over $2 million, actually, in operating expenses since 2006, and what hasn't been mentioned is the fact that on our books, we are paying, it must be a few million or whatever Howard probably knows, in paying off the debt, the $15 million in terms of amortizing the debt. Nobody even talks about that now. Anyhow, I'm sure you'll take a good look at it. With regard to Village Hall, I'm not going to talk about the expenses and everything else. I think there, a lot depends on what the upfront costs are, trying to market it. I think it depends on comparing what it costs in amortizing the debt versus leasing space, okay? I'm going to address something else, which is just as important. Mention has been made, in fact, it was on, in the 2011 request for expression of interest, that it be, that it be a restaurant. And there was also mention made that assistance would be given in terms of approving a liquor license and also a pallet, okay?
Thank you.
I thought, first of all, I think, I think it is a very exciting thing, if it can happen. I realize it's a big if, okay? But to put something, a restaurant and a liquor license in that part of town, which is really, it's dead, let's put it that way. No one goes there, it's out of the way. You've done wonderful things with this downtown, no question about it. South Orange is much more attractive from terms of a business standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Ash.
So I think you would, it would be a good thing if you could go out at least and try. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Aaronson, I'm a longtime resident. Good evening, Mayor Torpe, trustees, Mr. Bull. All the people crossing the street in South Orange, you are taking, they are taking their lives every single day. The banners that you have posted all around town do not work. You were elected in South Orange to serve the residents.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Yep, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Mike Shikram. I live at 86 Hillside Avenue in West Orange, and I appear to speak about the Jersey Animal Coalition. I've been a volunteer there for seven years, and I'm asking that the board continues to work with the shelter. I don't believe it's in the best interest of the village of South Orange to take over the shelter or any of the other options that are being discussed. Unfortunately, there's a tremendous amount of misinformation being posted online by a few fortunate former volunteers that terrible things are happening at the shelter. I'm there every weekend and every other chance I get, and I can tell you, there's no animals being abused, there's no sick animals. Mr. Festa's been there, Mr. Lerner's been there, your vet was there this weekend. So I think you all know that the animals are healthy, and I just want you to keep that in mind, and also, I mean... in mind, and also, I mean, there's, I will also say that there is a lot of things talked about Ruth, and one of the things you should all remember is that she helped found that shelter, has helped get thousands of animals adopted, and she can be a little prickly at times, but I've never had a problem speaking my mind to her in a respectful manner. And we've had our disagreements, and unfortunately, some people have disagreements with her, and it gets emotional, and people say the wrong things, and they don't volunteer anymore. And I feel terrible about that, but unfortunately, you have to respect the administration of the shelter like you would any business or any other organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Shetelick, and I live in Union. I also am an ex-volunteer at JAC. I've been, I was a volunteer for seven years. I trained over 200 people to be volunteers. I was banned because I made some comments about the way the shelter was being run. And the whole thing is, I'm sure the people that are running it mean well, but they don't have enough money to keep it going, not the way it should be. And that's the problem. The animals are suffering because they can't keep it up. So that's the only thing that I'm worried about, is the animals. If you can find a way to help the animals, get somebody else to take it over, or the volunteers are willing to help put the animals someplace else, it's just that we don't want them staying there, okay? That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, seeing as there are no further members in the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments. And there are a couple of follow-ups. First is, the Village Hall discussion we'll have in a moment, and I'm personally optimistic, I think there are a couple of good options that we can discuss there. The Rinda Road ordinance as well, we have that on second reading in a little bit, so we'll be able to address those pretty shortly. The question from the gentleman about the Glenview Road paving, and will that include curbs? Mr. Lewis, do you know off the top of your head? I don't, I don't have that.
I'll look it up, and I'll let you know.
Okay. Well, what we can do, if you'd like to leave your information, is it?
I think it is.
If, either way, if you'd like to leave your information with, with the clerk here, we can make sure to get that answer to that question to you.
Includes curbs and drainage.
It does include curbs and drainage?
Yes.
Okay. I think we'll be able to speak to the questions about the pedestrian safety efforts during the Public Safety Committee update. I know you've got some facts and figures there, which I know you're just waiting to share with us. Unfortunately, that update might not be for a few hours.
It might last a few.
And also, might last a few hours. And a JAC update, Mr. Lerner, I don't know if there's anything that you can, just a couple of minutes, if you can just give an update to some of the comments that were made, kind of where things are, where we're going.
Yeah, just, just to give a quick update, we did a communications timeline, because we have received many questions about the JAC. Just to give everyone a quick rundown of where we're at, March 12th, we did an inspection with the New Jersey State Health Department. Following that inspection, we closed it down with 51 violations. There are state requirements that are required by a shelter, how to keep animals, how the facility should be met, and how the operation of the facility must be done. The JAC is not in compliance with this. It does not have, there's nothing kind of in between, it's if they're doing something right or doing something wrong. A letter on March 13th was given to the Vet of Record, who at that time, we believed was Dr. Santiago. Dr. Santiago informed us at that time that he was not the Vet of Record and had not been since November. March 12th, we sent a letter to Mrs. Perlmutter, who was the acting president for the JAC at that time, letting her know that the Vet of Record was not the Vet of Record. We asked her who the new Vet of Record was. On March 24th, we received the report, which was compiled by the state and the local office, and it was given to the JAC. With that came with the 51 violations. On April 3rd, we sent a letter to Mrs. Perlmutter stating that, once the violations have been completed, to notify the village and we would reschedule a reinspection. As long as they kind of went down the list and abated everything, we were ready to go back in and re-inspect to open them. April 11th, the, we learned that the JAC had retained counsel. April 21st, Dr. Santiago, we sent a letter to him, specifically letting him know what needed to be done to lift the quarantine, because there was two different issues. One was the quarantine, one was the closure. With that, on April 21st, there was another letter sent by the Administration Office, just going over the requirements that were missing within the lease. And so they had three different things that they needed to accomplish. One was all the facility and animal care requirements, and that's governed by the State Health Department and the Local Health Department. Two was the existing license to open, and then three was the lease requirements that they had to do. Up to this date, we really haven't heard anything with regards to the facility. As of right now, we, we have been in there multiple, for different times, investigating separate issues. Last week, we were told, well, just to go back, we got a lot of people who asked about adoptions. Volunteers were calling us, asking for whether or not we would adopt, be able to adopt an animal. The village reached out to a couple shelters. We did work with the Associated Humane to take an animal out of the JAC, transfer it to the Associated Humane where that person would be able to adopt an animal. The only requirements that we had was that there was a commitment letter of the person who was willing to adopt the animal, a certification from Dr. Santiago, and a, yeah, Clean Bill of Health confirmation letter, and then the transfer agreement from the JAC to the Associated Humane. We received none. We were quite, yeah, we were quite surprised, just because we had at least four people contact us for adoptions. But once we proposed that to the JAC, we got no response. Last Monday, or I guess a few weeks ago, I think two weeks ago, we received word that East Orange Water was out to try to turn off their water, but had trouble doing that. They had a delinquency in payment, and I ended up reaching out to East Orange Water, finding out that they were, in fact, getting their water turned off. We took action, we actually reached out to NJSPCA, letting them know that this was taking place. They were willing, able to pay it, literally as the person was driving down the driveway to turn off their wire, water, they paid their water bill. We went there last week to not only check on the animals, we had some concerns about some animals. We did bring a vet from Associated Humane on Friday. The animals are in, appear to be in okay condition. We were ready to remove any animals that needed medical treatment, none were removed. They are still not in compliance with the state as a facility, so we cannot lift the quarantine, take the closure off, or open, or reopen them. And so what I am preparing at this point for the board is really four options. The first option is to look for another private organization to take it over, to turn it into a municipal pound, and have another vet take it over and help us run that. The JAC remaining open, if they can become compliant and they can continue on, or outsourcing it all. So what I will be providing the board is those four different options with some cost analysis that they can review and then make a decision, so.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I could, just one, only because I was so singled out. I did write a letter to the president of the JAC dated April 21st. I'm happy to make the letter available to anyone who wants a copy of it, I'm happy to put the letter on the website. Basically consists, as Mr. Lerner alluded to, to a listing of various items in the lease and requesting them, at least that the JAC had signed and agreed to. It's just a laundry list of specific requirements in the lease. And, and again, I'm happy to make the letter available in light of the, the way it was characterized, and the way I was characterized.
If, if there's no reason not to, why don't you just put it on the website?
I'm happy to do so.
Okay, why don't we move on to the discussion on Village Hall? So this was related to the agenda item that you submitted, Trustee Calm. I would just ask the board, considering that we're like 5% or 10% of the way into our meetings tonight, that we definitely, as much as I actually wanted to try and discuss as much of this as possible tonight, that maybe we have enough of a discussion to figure out if people, if there's an interest to hold the special meeting, and that that certainly seems like, given our rate of speed, something that would be much more preferable for us and for members of the public who want a good idea of a non-rush discussion about something that's important.
I think it's important to have a meeting so that we can fully and comprehensively and from an informed basis explore any of the options that are still open.
I appreciate the quickness of that thought.
I'd actually turn it over to Trustee Schnall, submitted the agenda item, so we got, we had talked about this briefly, so I'll, I'll turn it over to you, I definitely have thoughts, brief ones, but feel free.
So how far do we want to go into this? I mean, I, I think the, the, I basically just considered, again, I was having a conversation with Trustee Calm, I saw, actually I got an email from one of the residents who, I guess the good news is, is we do listen, right? And so there was some input, and upon contemplating it, and thinking back, I basically reconsidered it, and I, and I think, as long as, again, I sort of defer a little bit to our administration and Village Council, I was concerned and voted against it the last time, because I didn't want to cause undue costs and, and timing losses if I didn't think there was a possibility. But upon, as I said, re-contemplation, I would like to see, take, take a stab at, at putting out the RFEI, since we've already done a bunch of that work, if that can be done in parallel, then I'm all in favor for it.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that, as long as it's done in parallel and without derailing where we are, because if, if it's not a possibility and we derail where we are, we're just continuing to add more cost to the project.
Exactly, yeah, correct.
I, I as well, I don't have an objection of putting it out again, but I do have either a prerequisite or a prerequisite that we establish or understand what costs would be for the alternative, if we did sell the building, the alternative locations for Village Hall. I think it's fairly complex, and we should have some sort of estimate so that we have a way of judging if, the decision, if somebody does put in a bid for the building, that we understand how to make the decision if we want to move on it. I think there are two parts to it. One is to understand what it costs for an alternative Village Hall, and the other one is to have some realistic projection of what the reconstruction or the renovation of Village Hall is now projected to be, so that we can make a rational decision. The other part of it is, is that I do not see it as a delay factor for us moving forward. It needs to be completed before we move forward with the construction plans. The other is, that's basically the time limit for establishing it. The other is, is that what is a reasonable cost for doing this? We should understand how much the RFEI would be and, and have some sort of estimate of moving that forward. Again, I don't have an objection of moving it forward, given that we have these parameters.
As I said to Trustee Calm, I, part of my objection last time was, the firm that we used last time did a very poor job, in my opinion, and actually didn't even meet all the qualifications to what we had asked. And to expect a different result from the same people didn't strike me as making sense, and that we should actually reconsider looking, who we're going to look at advertise, and how we want it to advertise. Because last time, there were some very specific requirements, and that those things may not, might, probably should not be on the table at the same point. And if we should do it, and at the Trustee Levinson's point, what is the cost that we're willing to spend? As we found out that it would, it's probably not $5,000, I don't know what the number is, but I think it's worth having a discussion. And again, I say, I think that we need the administration to do some of the homework, as to Trustee Levinson's point, and to, to what the real costs are. And at the same token, I think we could all do some, you know, some background work and, and prepare for, for a meeting where we could have an in-depth discussion all the way across all the points that are being made here tonight.
So can I ask a guiding question? Which is, are people comfortable with at least being of the opinion enough that folks want to explore the costs, options associated with doing this, such that it would require a larger discussion?
Yes.
Oh, it necessarily does require a larger discussion.
Right. And if we're just all on that same page, then why don't we just go ahead and get that together and?
Maybe we'll pick a date.
Yeah. Unless, I don't know how, I just don't know how far we want to get into things, or if we just want to basically tease it out enough that we all are all on the same page, that we want to have a larger discussion?
It sounds like we are.
Right.
Yeah, I think if we, if we agree, I promise I won't talk all night. If, if we can agree that, the goal, I mean, not just kind of like the sort of goal, but the real goal is that in a best-case scenario, we, we do find somebody from, from the private sector that's interested in this building, and we have at least options in front of us. It's similar to, to what I was saying back in February, is that, you know, all I want for this board to be able to see is options. And if in the ninth inning, you know, two down, you know, batter up, we have no better option, I'm, I'm more than happy to support the Village Hall renovation as it's moving forward right now. But I think we've heard from a lot of residents and, and received some good emails, and I'm really kind of thrilled to, to hear the response to that. I'm, I'm very excited that so many people listened, et cetera. One thing I don't want to get hammered down, because the time, it flies so quickly, is that in this window of opportunity right now, assuming that the abatement gets completed by July 1st, I, I don't want to study, I don't want to spend too much time assessing what could be, or running too many cost scenarios. Trustee Levinson, I 100% admire, you know, your, your numbers focus, but I think at this point, all, all we really need to do is allocate some level of budget to advertise and just push it back out on the market. Because without knowing if anybody's going to bite, and giving them the opportunity to say, all right, we're, we're somewhat interested in, and formulate that proposal, there might be, you know, 50 different scenarios. And I mean, we, we outline them, and the request for expressions of interest, all the various things that the village would consider as a part of a submission. And that's where I do think that the, that the firm got it right. In discussing this also with the village administrator, one of his concerns was, and similar to Trustee Rosner's, was the firm that was hired previously had already put together some conceptual plans of the different things that could or could not work. I don't think that is the basis of how we go out there, but I do like having this as an attachment on the website, as here are some of the things that we looked at, that may be possibilities, but not be married in the least bit to any of these conceptual drawings, but instead letting the market forces dictate what may or may not come in, and fully agree it will not alter the timeline in the least bit. But as I requested before, to say that there's no cost, or that I'm not requesting any budget, is, is not realistic. If there is that genuine effort, I, I do think, to Trustee Rosner's point again, it's, it's not going to be a small amount, so what is that amount that we would like the administration and our staff to, to start formulating, some kind of proposal of how to get it out there?
It sounds like there are some complex questions in there, and I don't want to curtail the conversation tonight, if people do want to continue to have it, but I don't think we're going to answer any of those questions tonight. I think those are all questions that we should ask ahead of time, as much as we can, of the, of Mr. Lewis, so that when we do meet to discuss, we have all the information so we can have a discussion. But, you know, I don't know, each, each of those questions is a, is a, you know, that you raised just now, is at least a half-hour discussion, I think.
I know.
So I just don't know, I know, I know that we want to talk about it, but I will defer to what everybody else wants to do, but I would just.
How quickly can we put a meeting together?
Because I don't think we can answer those questions until we get some specifics from the administrator.
And I, I think to that point, and certainly in advance of, I, I certainly agree, tonight is that we're not in a position to have a meaningful discussion of it. I think there are certainly factors and things I can do in terms of projecting amortization costs, you know, if you assume a certain project cost, spread it over, bond it over 30 years, what's that going to cost you? Certainly, we can, at a minimum, take our current lease in our current space, project that with some assumed cost of living increase, to project out what the total cost of that would be over the same 30-year period. You know, speculating on building a brand-new building on some other unknown location becomes a lot more difficult, because now you're having to try and identify a site, what would you pay for it? You could project on a square footage basis, I guess, new construction. We could put together certain, certainly something like that. The other challenge, though, of course, is there are, obviously, there are assumptions The other challenge, though, of course, is there are, obviously there are assumptions you're going to make in terms of cost of living increases on the existing space, but there's also the unknown of comparing it to an estimate versus a bid for the reconstruction work, and sometimes they come in higher, sometimes they come in lower, you don't really know. The estimate on the asbestos was even after the change orders, it's still now 30% less than what the estimate was, so I'm certainly not suggesting that'll be the case with village hall, but again, until you get a bid, so that, you know, at the end of the day, I think it's certainly a worthwhile exercise, I think it's certainly, we're at a time where having the building now abated of the asbestos eliminates one giant contingency that any potential, you know, developer independent of the economy, which admittedly, two years, three years ago, was not the opportune time to do it, but you also had this great sort of contingency factor built in that there's asbestos that, you know, I don't know what they would have factored into their projections, so that uncertainty's been eliminated, I, you know, again, I will do, whenever you set the meeting, I will do everything I can to put as much information together prior to that meeting. The other component of it, I think that the RFEI in the past, and I've read it, it did provide some sort of ideas and suggestions of what the village was interested in, but I think, and even in just discussions and contemplating what could be done there, I think that the board needs to give a lot of advanced thought, I think it would facilitate a better discussion about what you're willing to entertain there, whether it includes potential development on the parking lot and the adjacent property that we own there that goes all the way back, or whether that has to stay as a parking lot, what types of uses you would envision in there, all of which are going to factor in, I think significantly, in whatever response and whatever you may get.
I think the other thing that I want you to bring to us, so that we can understand what liability we have, because the building is on the historical register, and we have received or in position to receive, and you can clarify that, almost a million dollars for the restoration of the exterior, so how would that sell the building effect, or something, we don't have to discuss it now, but those are the things that I'm looking for you to bring to the table also when we meet.
So can we all agree to schedule, I mean, I don't know, we should figure this out like tomorrow, maybe we can send out a doodle poll, but it sounds like that is the consensus that we do want to have a meeting, and that if there are any other items that we need to know for that meeting, that we can send them to Mr. Lewis beforehand?
I don't mind working with Barry in developing those, those cost models.
And just in closing, I just want to, I think it's important that, it bothered me when someone came up and said that we don't ask questions and we don't do our due diligence, we had looked at options, again, several years ago, at all the possibilities, and we were left with the decision we made, and we all know, and are not going to repeat what was stated earlier, circumstances have changed, and so we're really willing to be open about it and to look at it again, but I just don't want it to be left unsaid, that we have not, in prior years, explored all the options and was very, very open and receptive to the best decision on behalf of our taxpayers, and I'm a taxpayer, so it's in all of our interests to do the right thing, and I wanted to make sure that that was on the record.
Could we schedule, I mean, since we're all here instead of a doodle, can we just look at next Monday for having the special meeting?
I think Monday nights are already theoretically supposed to be scheduled as continuation meeting, we maybe actually want to do conference agenda next Monday, too, along with village hall.
Yeah, I know, it went over, so if we need, is there a way we can do a continuation for next Monday?
I'm okay with next Monday night.
And then also doing this discussion?
Yeah, and I would like to do a continuation at this point also.
Does that present a problem as far as proper notice?
No, we have time for that, I mean, we should get through our special, we should get through, so we can discuss how much we cover for the rest of the night.
We have, that is a standing date.
But we can, we can recess tonight for next Monday, the 16th, if that works for everybody, and do the same thing.
The only thing we need to verify is the availability of the building, or potentially the loft, or I don't know what type of public turnout you'd expect, so, you know, the conference room, you know, when we do things in either of those are probably too small, because it basically just a comedy.
We'll look into some available spaces, but we will plan on 7:30 on the 16th, and that will be a meeting, not just for, that will be a continuation, I assume, maybe what we can do is just get through the special meeting and make sure we take care of all the action items, pay the bills we need to pay, and then we can just maybe, if people want to do the whole conference, let's do it the next time.
Let's do the whole conference agenda next meeting along with the village.
Otherwise, I think we, I think we'd probably break 1:00, we tried to get through everything tonight.
With me here?
If you skip the public safety report, you might get out in time.
So everybody's okay with the 16th, 7:30, we're going to find an available location, we'll notice that, do we need to notice a closed session from 7:30 to 8:00 on the 16th, or do we not foresee a need for that?
I think, I just think we should schedule the closed session, at least for 7:30, only because of the JAC issue, I don't know if we're going to be more into that.
That's fine, it doesn't take anything to do that, so.
But why don't we advertise the meeting then to start at 7:45, so we're not sitting around for half an hour, in case of the JAC, in case we have no reason to go into closed session.
Can we do seat and all?
Yeah, we'll find a location, but why don't we just stick to 7:30 or 8:00 if you don't mind, because that's what people know, so we'll notice the meeting that same way.
I mean, the preference would be here or the loft, because then we can televise it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we will do that. Moving on, ordinances for second reading.
To adopt provisions of the Open Public Records Act to allow the township of South Orange Village to charge and collect certain fees for the production of records pursuant to the Open Public Records Act, NJSA 47:18-1 at sect, including special service charges when production involves an extraordinary expenditure of time and effort.
Thank you. Mr. Rother, I know we've discussed this obviously in the last meeting, but is there anything that you want to add as far as this ordinance is concerned?
No, only that fees, even, even simple copying fees can't be charged unless there is an ordinance, so this is, this is necessary.
Considering this is the second reading of this ordinance, at this time I'd like to open the public, the meeting up to public hearing. Is there any member of the public wishes to speak on this ordinance? Okay, seeing as there are no members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, like, unless there are any further questions or comments from the board and ask for a motion.
I move the ordinance.
Moved by trustee Column, seconded by trustee Levison, could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Thank you. Second reading, 2014-09, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village, section 152-36.
Susan.
Mike.
Mike.
Second reading of public hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village, section 152-36, schedule four, with respect to parking on Rinda Road.
Okay, does someone want to give just a brief update as far as what this covers?
Originally with Rinda Road, I did speak to Mr. Chen years ago about it, but one of the residents have been sending me pictures of the cars, commuter cars parked on the street, I asked the police to do an update on it and give me a report of where the cars were parked, and I've seen most of them are parked closest to South Orange Avenue, and so we decided to push forth the same commuter rules on the first half of Rinda Road we're called, and as I said then, people will either come and ask for it to be done on the whole road, or the cars will move to the other side of the street, if we saw it tonight, most people want it extended to the whole road. I think we already had the ordinance written both ways, so we could easily modify it and do it again on first reading at the next meeting and do the whole street, or we can vote on this half and do the other half in the next meeting and the first meeting and the second meeting in July, whichever way we want to go, so.
So I'm in support of extending it for the whole road, now how the process is done, whichever is the most expedient way to accomplish that.
We can redo the first reading, we'd have to wait to the next meeting to do...
Mr. Rother, can't we just amend it?
Well, you can't amend it without reintroducing it.
It's a substantial change.
Because it's certainly a substantial change, obviously you could adopt the one tonight, that would have the immediate effect of addressing that parking, but then that would potentially also cause the spillover onto the other part that the residents...
So my suggestion would probably be, do we do the first reading, the next meeting to do it for the whole street, otherwise we might clutter up the street, and then in July, the second meeting, we do the second ordinance for the whole street.
I would tend to pass this one, this reading, and then go for the...
I would agree with that, and I would also add the caveat that...
Agree with which one?
Agree with, pass the one tonight with the intention of looking at the curve as well, and in fact, I would want to look a little closer at the curve and just maybe do some measurements, because if cars are parking on that curve and school buses are trying to go by, I'm not sure that works, we may want to just say, "No parking on the curve," I mean, that, that's a situation that exists in various places as well, and may in fact be the safer situation.
Just something that should be looked at, I think. One, one final suggestion, if the consensus is to do the whole section, you could adopt the one you have tonight, the village president could use his authority for the 90-day period to impose those restrictions on the rest of the street while you do the other ordinance.
Okay, that's perfect, I like that.
And I'd be more than happy to do that if that's what the consensus is.
Rock out.
Yeah.
All right.
Just curious, is that, does that have, does that have to be declared as a part of some emergency, or can you just?
Yeah, if there's a public safety, public safety circumstances exist.
Yeah, I'm just not familiar with that provision, I'm fine going the other way.
We did it, I did it multiple times for the seat and hall parking.
Yeah, I thought that was in a state of, or you had declared it, an emergency situation.
No, it wasn't a state of emergency.
Not a state of emergency, but an emergency.
It was just something where we had identified that there was a public safety concern, and to provide immediate relief for that, I could do that, and then in the next board meeting, you know, the way the charter is written is you can, the board can, you know, undo any of those kind of executive...
All right, if we can do that, I'm, I'm fine with doing that. If trustee Rosner, you're good with that, so we're going to pass this tonight, Alex can, can do it for the other side of the road, and then we'll introduce a first, can we do that at the next meeting, or do you want to wait till the 23rd, the regular meeting to do another first reading?
I think what Walter was suggesting is to take a look at the curve as well.
Yeah, but the ordinance for, I think, the ordinance for the rest of the meeting.
If you can get it done by the next meeting, there's no reason not to.
Yeah.
Yeah, just add it in there.
On Monday.
Although, we should just...
It should be on the 23rd.
Yeah, because what I would assume that we're going to do is adjourn the special meeting and recess the conference agenda, which should, if that's the case, and we notice it for no action, then we can't do that.
Right.
Next one is, why don't we just aim for the 23rd?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, you're right, okay, 23rd then, sounds good, I move the ordinance.
My second.
Wait, before you do that, you do just have a public hearing, so if there's anybody who wishes to speak on the ordinance, again.
Did you get all that, Mr. Chen?
All right, so seeing as there's no members of the public who wish to comment, unless there's further discussion from the board, do I have a motion?
I move.
Ooh, three-way tie.
Second.
Motion by trustee Column, and then second by trustee Davis Ford. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee. Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance 2014-10, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance authorizing the Board of Trustees to file a petition with the Legislature of the State of New Jersey for the adoption of a special law to authorize the amendment of the special charter governing the township of South Orange Village.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to a public hearing, seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak about this, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by trustee Levison, seconded by trustee Davis Ford, could I have the roll, please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2014-11, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cash bank pursuant to NJSA 48:4-45.14.
Okay, thank you, I'd like to, at this time, open the meeting up for public hearing, and seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to comment, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Barry, just may go.
Is there anything, Mr. Lewis, that you would like to add?
I just reiterated, we did, explained it on introduction, it's a procedure where there is a cap imposed by the state, we're not approaching the cap with the introduced budget, but this allows you to kind of create a rainy day fund for future years with your excess leftover cap, in case you had some contingencies, but it does not in any way indicate, and we are not anywhere close to the cap.
Thank you, do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by trustee Levison?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schnall, could I have the roll, please?
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2014-12, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance establishing calendar year 2014 sewer user charge and a special assessment for joint meeting litigation expenses.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public hearing, seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to comment, I would like to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by trustee Column?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Levison, could I have the roll, please?
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance for first reading, 2014-13, introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village, section 152-34, schedule two, with respect to parking on Meadow Brook Place.
Thank you, could, for any member of the public who might be watching, could we just give a brief, you got it pulled up right there?
Yeah, this is just, this is a small little stretch between Hillside and Meadow Brook Lane on Meadow Brook Place, it's adjacent to the park right down by Flood's Hill, and the intention of this ordinance is to offer a little peace and quiet to some of the residents, there's only a few homes there, but what ends up happening is early mornings, there are some organized exercise facilities, not facilities, I'm sorry, programs that are occurring, and it's, this is an effort, I'm not sure if we're going to completely get rid of it, but it's an attempt to at least offer a little peace and quiet during the early morning hours, and so the stretch of time goes from, I need some help here, it's not written here, but I think it's nine AM?
Nine AM.
Nine to nine?
Nine AM to nine PM, yeah.
And it's also the, the, what we're doing is we're, we've actually looked at this for a while, and trustee Clark...
Mirroring Mead Street, basically.
It's to be consistent with Mead Street, that's really the...
And it's from Hillside Place to Meadow Brook Lane, for that stretch right there.
And this was looked at by the Recreation and Cultural Affairs Committee, the Public Infrastructure Committee, and the Public Safety, so it's actually been around.
Every committee, every trustee, for three years, we're ready.
It's a good chance it won't pass.
I guess one question, has any notice been given to the individuals in those homes that this is happening?
We need to pass it on first, reading first.
Okay.
We send the notice out once it's introduced, because then we also give them the date of the public hearing, and give them a copy of the ordinance.
And I guess I have to ask, on top of what Walter offered, is, do we just notice the four homes on Meadow Brook Place, but also around the corner, because that was an issue from a couple of years ago?
Right.
Yeah, and it's always a question where you draw the line, because as even evidenced tonight, is you don't allow parking there, they're just going to move down, to me, and that is what happened last year, we, last, or I think it was last year, maybe two years ago now, the original proposal actually went down almost a half a block on each of the streets, and then predictably, the people at the end, so we probably still have the mailing list from all those streets, can do it all.
What's the restriction on Meadow Brook right now?
Right now, it's on the north side is, I'm sorry, the south side.
No parking on the south side, on the north side you can park.
Anytime?
Yeah.
And, you know, and again, there is, I had another resident who does live around the corner, who, you know, inquired, because now, if someone wants, now there's no parking on both sides, so if someone wants to have a visitor over between those hours, if they're staying late for dinner party, you know, that is a con... for dinner party, you know, that is a consequence. You know, that's...
Just to be careful though, Steve, it's not there's no parking on both sides, it's that there is no parking on the north side from nine AM.
From nine AM to nine AM.
You can park from nine AM to nine PM.
Right.
You cannot park after that time or before that time.
Right.
Just one question about that, what happens during the summer concerts?
During any event, my understanding, actually, Mr. Lewis, if you would confirm this, but I believe during any public event, whether it's movies or music, anything that's done at Meadow Brook, at the park, then there's no, the restrictions are removed. Is that correct?
We've always, we've always allowed people to park till the end of the concert, the end of a movie night or...
Any event.
Any event, including baseball games that sometimes run late. And so those often go to nine, 30, quarter to 10. So that's what we've done. In fact, we've actually allowed both, parking on both sides on the streets here.
So how does the, how does an individual know that they can do that during an event? Is there signage there that says that?
No, it's just within a section of the code, and correct me if I'm wrong, I can't remember, my brain's a little flurry, fuzzy right now, but I think it specifically notes within our code with all the restrictions is that the exemption is village-sponsored events, blah, 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 that apply to everything, in which case if we're doing something, the code's not going to receive our things. So I'm...
I think every resident has our village code memorized.
I do, unfortunately. I move the ordinance.
Okay, moved by trustee Cullen.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schnall. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Rosner?
No.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
All right.
I move that the ordinance 2014 be scheduled for a second reading and public hearing at the June 23, 2014 board meeting, and a public hearing be held at that time for the reference ordinance. The village clerk is authorized to take the necessary actions to publish notice for such hearing.
Motion by trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay. Move on to the consent agenda.
Resolutions on Consent Agenda, 149, Resolution Authorizing Final Change Order Number Two for RIVAX Contracting Corp. for Construction Services for the project known as Road Improvements 2013, various streets, Thorden Road, Rinda Road, Kingsland Terrace, Kingsland Court, and South Ridgewood Road, representing a net decrease of $192, 624.45 to original contract amount. Resolution 150, Resolution Affirming the Village Administrator's Hiring of 2014 Seasonal Staff in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Resolution 151, Resolution Hiring a Part-Time Clerk Typist in the South Orange Building Department. Resolution 152, Resolution Hiring a Part-Time Clerk Typist in the South Orange Police Department. Resolution 153, Resolution Awarding a Contract to Buyer CDJR for the purchase of two 2014 Jeep Patriots in the amount not to exceed $38,500. Resolution 154, Resolution Authorizing Inclusion in the Essex County Urban County Community Development Program for program years 2015 through 2017. Resolution 155, Resolution Authorizing Change Order Number One for Zenith Construction Services, Inc., for Construction Services for the River Greenway Project Phase 5-1 Pathways in Cameron Park, representing a net decrease of $2,210 to the original contract amount. Resolution 156, Resolution Authorizing Final Change Order Number Two for Stenzali Construction LLC for Construction Services of the Tyrell Avenue Road Improvements Phase One from Scotland Road to Grove Road. Resolution 157, Resolution Awarding Contract to RIVAX Contracting Corporation for Glenview Road Improvements from Hosker Road to Mountain Drive. Resolution 158, Resolution in Support of New Jersey Assembly Bill Number A3157, a bill concerning technology to render mobile telecommunications devices inoperable.
Thank you. Are there any questions on any consent agenda items? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Cullen.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Davis Ford. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're really moving here. And then I've got a couple of appointments.
Yes.
Three people to the Historic Preservation Commission, and these are changing the class designations and appointing Bob Barnett, Gary Hill, and Anina Rossin to the HPC.
Yeah, it's actually, the first two for Gary and Bob are just classification changes from...
Right, and Anina is a...
Is a new, she's a new appointment.
Right.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, next, liquor license renewals.
I'm sorry, if I could just, I know, just real quick, we'll probably bring this up at the next meeting, but I just want to get a sense from the board. Actually, Commissioner Barnett is, who is currently living and working in the village, is moving his residents out. And the current, even though there are, the, I need help from administration or council, there is, our charter allows for committee members to, who, they don't necessarily have to live in the village as long as they work, but the commissions, their bylaws do not allow that. So I'd like to make a modification. The commissioner supports it. He will continue to be working on South Orange Avenue where his main office is, but he's moving into New York City. So I just want to make sure you guys would be okay with that. This would be a...
I think, I think that, and I guess the village attorney should probably weigh in, but I think the historic commission ordinance, there was a specific reason why we had to use residents, and I think the only exception, there was only one exception.
There was, there was one exception, as I'm recalling, I don't have the statute...
I think you had to have a certain expertise and...
That could have been out of the village, but you insisted that he be, that they all be in the village when we adopted the ordinance.
I thought we took it from the state statute. I don't know if we were allowed to make any changes to whether residents, whether they were residents or not, but the, I know that we discussed this at light many times, and part of it was an objection, because people felt that someone who's weighing in on village properties should have a stake in the village. And there was, we all, you know, complained about, and it was maybe more directed at one person than should have been, but it was a pretty conscious effort to keep it to residents. So I'm not really, you know, quite sure or not, but I think we have to check the state statute also on what we're allowed to do.
No, and as I'm recollecting it, the statute allowed one of the members...
Right, that's what I thought.
One of the experts not to be a resident, but you intentionally said, no, we want them to be a resident. And I'll go back and double check, I'll double check the statute and the ordinance, but my recollection is that, and I think I'm fairly certain of that.
So then it would just be a question for the rest of trustees and trustee Rosner to consider if they would allow a change. So again, this is a sitting commissioner who's been sitting from the beginning, he's a Class A, we're switching him to Class A because he is an architect, he's familiar and he would like to stay involved.
And he still has his business in town.
He still has his business.
I 100% agree.
So that's right.
I have no problem.
I just want to know if we're allowed to do it.
Well, all right.
But if we are, then...
If we are.
Do we have to change the ordinance?
That's what we would do.
For the, it's not, from what trustee Schnall was just saying, at least the one that the village has for us is more lenient in that if you're a business owner, you can participate. What he's saying is that the HPC bylaws state that you have to be a resident.
Right.
Is that an issue for us or for the HPC?
I thought our ordinance also...
Well, so Mr. Rother is going to check on that, but if, I guess the question, so to trustee Cullen's point is, if Mr. Rother finds that it is okay, do we make the change here at the, it is, at the Board of Trustees?
No, I pulled up the adopted ordinance and there's three classes A, B, and C, and it says Class A, B, and C members shall reside in South Orange. So as currently on the books, every member of every class has to reside in town, in the ordinance.
And we're looking to that, that's what, the reason I brought this up was to make a change to that.
To amend the ordinance.
To amend the ordinance.
If we're so inclined.
It may be to...
Unless there's some statutory prohibition, which I'm not aware of. As I'm recalling, the statute allows the architect to reside.
Okay, all right. So we would need to modify the HPC bylaws.
Or ordinance, the ordinance.
Steve, just as a thought exercise, and it may be too late for a thought exercise, if you were to modify said ordinance, just take that to the extreme, and how many members of the HPC are there, and what if each one of them fell under that exception at one point, and then we had a Historic Preservation Commission that was made up of people entirely who did not live in South Orange, what would the effect be upon their decisions as far as...
Sure. And that's a fair thing, except for Mr. Rother said there's only one would be allowed. That's what, our ordinance only allows for one to be an out-of-resident, if I heard you correctly.
One class. It's one class, one class.
One class, which was Class A?
Class A. But that's a person, typically, if this...
It would make sense for it to be A, just by the way, because the A is the...
The expertise that's hard to...
Is the expertise. So you might want to get that from outside of, in fact, you might even want to, you know, regardless of the fact that this guy is sitting there, I mean, sometimes you want to get an outside perspective.
All right. Let me suggest, Mr. Rother will review the applicable state statute and give you guidance on what you could do if you were so inclined.
Thank you. That would be great. Thank you.
When is he moving? Sorry, just how quickly does this need to be done?
I think it's, I think it's next month. I believe it's July.
Okay, so you have a little bit of time, trustee. Okay, great.
Okay, moving on to the liquor license renewals, what I will need is a motion to recess the special meeting and to reconvene as the alcohol beverage control board...
I move.
Okay, moved by trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I would like to call this meeting of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board of the Township of South Orange Village to order. Could we have the roll, please?
You get to vote.
I do get to vote, this is my favorite, I know. It's very exciting.
Big kids table.
I'm all ready.
President Torpey, are you here?
President Torpey?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Cullen?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
I'm here.
Trustee Levinson?
Yeah.
Trustee Rosner?
Yeah.
Trustee Schnall?
Here.
A resolution 2014-159, Resolution Approving the Renewal of Liquor Licenses for the 2014-2015 License Term, and...
So I can redo the licenses. Do you have a question?
Why are we doing some tonight and some in two weeks? Why aren't we just doing them all on the 23rd?
Well, I just felt that all these were, that I put on tonight, were all up to date and all, they had all tax clearance certificates.
Yeah, so let's just go do it.
And I just didn't want to, I just didn't want to hold all these licenses.
So some people didn't get their stuff back in time, or?
Right.
Okay.
They didn't return their applications or they don't have tax clearance with the state.
I'm fine with it.
And I just felt, why should we punish these people for a couple of people that didn't?
And it's fairly customary everywhere I've been to not wait till the very last meeting at which you could do it, just in case you didn't have a form or anything else, people who got their paperwork.
And I guess the next obvious question is, have people haven't gotten back in time to make sure they do, or?
I, yes, I'm on top of...
Okay, thank you.
Those three.
Yeah, I do have one question. Has the police department done all of the associated reviews?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, so...
Okay, so the three club licenses, the South Orange BPOE Lodge, the Societa Savoya, Third Street, the BPOE Lodges on Prospect, the Father Vincent Manila Center of Italian Culture on Fairview Ave, distribution licenses, University Liquors on South Orange Ave, A&amp;D on Valley, and Wine Emporium on Valley, consumption licenses, Pappy on 25 on Valley, Bunny's on South Orange Ave, Toroloco on Valley, Above Restaurant on South Orange Ave, Orange Lawn Tennis Club on North Ridgewood, and Rickleton's on Valley. So these have all been cleared, everything is, excuse me, a green light by all the departments that needed to review them. So unless there is any discussion, I'd ask for a motion.
I just have a quick question. How many are outstanding? Two, three?
Town Hall isn't in pocket right now. They haven't submitted their application. Cryin's, of course, is, I don't, I don't have an application, nor do I have a tax clearance certificate. And what was the third one?
Town Hall?
Town Hall, Cryin's.
Gaslight.
And Gaslight. I'm waiting for tax clearance.
You need, you're speaking to Mike.
I'm waiting for tax clearance for Gaslight.
Okay.
Kidoki?
I move.
Moved by trustee Cullen.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Clark. Let's take a roll call.
President Torpey?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
You know, it's not as much fun as you guys make it seem.
Do we make it seem fun?
Just because you ordered left to drink, you also get the vote now.
I know, isn't it great? So I would move to adjourn the alcohol beverage...
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just move, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the Alcohol Beverage Control Board and reconvene and the special meeting of the Board of Trustees. Motion by trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schnall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, so we're back to the special meeting.
And I had, and unless I missed it, and if I did, I apologize, probably due to the hour, there was an additional resolution that the clerks circulated Friday afternoon. It's one of the quote-in-between bill lists. Did you do 160?
I thought I saw that email get sent out.
That was one bill.
And then I sent out an email this afternoon wanting to add, as I explained, so I don't know, I don't think we did that.
Thank you.
So I have it handy, if you want me to just read it, it's Resolution Authorizing Payment of Various Obligations. And again, this is in between the bills list. The one that was on it circulated Friday was Tricon Enterprises, Inc., PO 445329, $51,570.36. This is a progress payment on the main work, and because of the prompt payment law, we're supposed to pay at our next regular meeting. And then what I sought to add, had to ask, so if, I would suggest then, including the resolution, that the pass-through of the insurance payment received from, so we got the insurance payment, SOPAC is the one who had the work done to give them the money, it's $21,799.55.
Can I just, can we just make sure that, I don't think either of those went out with the agenda, and especially when money is being spent, let's just make sure we get those out so that there's no possible perception that we're adding anything at the last minute. So it was two resolutions?
It was a single resolution, 2014-160, Resolution Authorizing Payment of Various obligations, and the two amounts that I mentioned.
I don't, it is.
You got it at the last minute on Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, it was sent out Friday, with the addition, the SOPAC I added, because I just found out about it this morning.
Yeah, I saw that in, in the email.
Okay, so do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments.
Good evening, Mr. Aaron, your longtime resident. Evening, President Torpey, trustees, Mr. Ball. I have clear permission for this 2014 ten.